I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Diana. Rule call, Thiana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Lacy?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent? Here. Mayor Long?
Here.
This meeting is being recorded.
Um, we now have a presentation from a Bird presentation by Bird Senior Account Executive Garrett Gwinowski. Is that correct?
Yes.
You are up.
Excellent. So, thank you first of all for allowing me to to speak in front of all of you. So, Bird is seeking approval to allow our micro mobility option to come to Fortuna. So, what we're really looking for is city approval to bring our electro electric scooter service to Fortuna. Uh, we provide a fleet of fifty scooters, uh, to start at least, uh, to help with connectivity, first and last mile transportation. I do have a a quick presentation that I can run through, really just gives you a high level overview of what Bird is, and then how we've been able to localize operations to really expand our reach. Uh, before the pandemic, uh, we were really only operating these large metropolitan cities. Now, uh, we actually partner with local entrepreneurs, a local business owner, to help us run operations, and that's how we're able to, uh, provide micro mobility services in communities like Fortuna. So, if I could share my screen.
You should be able to.
Yes, I can. And can you see my presentation now?
Yes.
So, what is Bird? Uh, Bird is kind of just like Uber and Lyft. We would download our Bird app, uh, and you would pull up the app and you'd be able to see Fortuna's city limits, uh, within the map. Within that map, um, you'd be able to see little Bird icons, uh, and that means that is available, that scooter would be available to rent and to ride. So, Bird is a last mile stand-up electric service sharing company, uh, really just bringing first and last mile transportation, uh, to your communities to really help with connectivity. How it works is, like I said, you would download our our Bird app. Um, you would upload your profile. You do have to be eighteen years or older to operate a Bird scooter. Uh, when you do pull it up, the operating zone would be Fortuna's city limits. Uh, we do operate on a dockless free-flowing model, so there's no different additional infrastructure needed to be implemented in Fortuna for us to run operations. We would just be using your existing infrastructure, whether that's bike racks or really utilizing that furniture loading zone, uh, so that space next to treat street signs, street lamps, really just making sure that these scooters do stay out of the pedestrian right away. Um, but as you see on the screen, on the those Bird icons, that means that, uh, scooter is available to rent and to ride. This is a series of short-term rentals. Average time being spent on a Bird scooter is about ten to twenty minutes. Average distance is about point eight to two and a half miles long. Um, it is a per-minute fee, so it's a dollar to unlock, and then about thirty cents per minute after that. This is our vehicle itself, so this is our Bird Zero vehicle. Um, I'll be able to, uh, send this over to you guys so you can kind of dive into it. Uh, but they are street legal. They have a handbrake, they have the back brake, they have lights, uh, on the front. Um, obviously, the brake lights on the back as well. Uh, they do are, and they are governed at fifteen miles per hour. So, the community should look at these scooters as kind of an existing or or additional infrastructure to your your biking infrastructure. We govern speed at fifteen miles per hour because that's the average speed of a a commuter on a bicycle. They go where bikes go, so bike lanes preferred. If you don't allow bicycles on sidewalks, these scooters wouldn't go on sidewalks as well. So, wherever you see bicycles currently in Fortuna, that's where these, uh, vehicles will be going as well. Obviously, the transportation benefits, there is no cost or operational burden to the city. We are, again, seeking just, uh, operational rights to bring Bird. We would then partner with a local entrepreneur who would be running ground operations. So, this is the existing person who lives in Fortuna, who knows the community. This individual will be running ground operations from sunup to sundown. And I do want to walk you through a day-to-life of this local fleet manager, since they'll be managing the fleet of Bird scooters, and that's going to really help paint a picture of a day-to-life of a Bird scooter that really goes through. So, uh, number one, uh, this individual, first off, uh, obviously, charging electric scooters, that we want to be a reliable source of transportation here. So, uh, all the charging is done behind closed doors. This local individual, this local entrepreneur, uh, will have a workspace, a workshop, whether that's a garage, an existing business where they'll be storing the vehicles overnight. So, the scooters will be collected at each and every night, overnight, they're they're maintenance and charged. Uh, first thing in the morning, they're a hundred percent charged. Then we strategically place them throughout the community in high-demand locations, whether this is transient public locations, uh, hotspot coffee spots, uh, where there's going to be high demand, where we know there's a good chance for conversion on that first ride. Again, we want to be a reliable source of transportation, so we want to put these scooters in the best places, uh, that the community would be using them to use. After that, uh, obviously, you unlock it, and then that dockless free-flowing model goes. Um, you can park them wherever you want, as long as it is out of the pedestrian right away. So, again, utilizing that, uh, bike infrastructure that Fortuna already has. You do have to take a picture of the Bird scooter. Once you are done, that stops your timer. It will then tell you, uh, the distance traveled, the time spent on it, the amount, uh, charged to your card. And then that, uh, picture kind of gives us the okay that you are parked in a a good location. Again, this does give us this opportunity to audit any end-of-ride photos that we do need if there are complaints. Uh, we have built in some additional resources that community members, even if they aren't utilizing, uh, the micro mobility option, uh, they can help us self-police as well. So, we have community mode, uh, which anyone who downloads the Bird app, uh, will have access to. So, if you do see a Bird parked and maybe a location that it shouldn't be, all you have to do is take a picture to of it. Our technology then pairs it up with a GPS, and it's sent to that local fleet manager, who would then respond in two hours to move that Bird scooter. Throughout the day, this individual is also proactively managing the scooter. So, number one, he will, he or she will be rebalancing Bird scooters. That is a Bird phrase for moving them from low-demand areas back to high-demand areas. So, if an individual does take it from the downtown area to a residence, um, maybe let's, uh, call this heck or something. Obviously, we love that they're using it as that last-mile solution, but we also know that it's not best serving the community in residential area. So, that individual will then take it from the residential area and put it back into a a chance where it has a better chance to convert as well. Then, um, we usually run operations until about eleven or midnight. After midnight, if you did open up the Bird app, there'd be no available scooters to rent and to ride. Um, at that time, the local individual collects all the Bird scooters, again, takes them back to that, um, localized warehouse, uh, charges them, maintainses them, and then the following morning, operations start all over again as well. So, putting them back into those initial parking spots, we do call those nest locations. Uh, we work with the city on kind of where we think, uh, these nest locations would be best at. But at the end of the day, we are a data company, so the longer we run operations, the better we get at it, because we see trends and, uh, we are able to see kind of where people are are utilizing these Bird scooters. The city itself, we get a a city dashboard, uh, so you would have have access to really three things. Number one, uh, you'd have access to where the Birds are in real time, uh, so, uh, a Birds Eye View, a Fortuna, with where the Birds are currently located, and then you'd be able to see where the Bird rides are starting, where the Bird rides are ending, and what those trip details really look like. So, giving you some hard data behind this micro mobility option as well. Fifty-five percent of our rides, as I said, this connectivity do end up in front of a local business or restaurant, so helping to stimulate the local economy that way. Our ultimate goal here at Bird is to eliminate unnecessary car trips. We truly believe that anything under two miles can be supplemented by another form of transportation. Obviously, our vehicle to do that is the electric scooter. Um, so really just, our our hope is that people will, uh, really a adopt to this sustainable, open-air, socially-distanced form of transportation when in Fortuna. Obviously, one, working with the first and last mile transportation option. Two, helping with connectivity, and then three, really using it as an amenity when people come to Fortuna as well. Customer service, um, there is a phone number, an email address on every Bird scooter that would be in the community. And as I said, uh, that community mode, as long as someone downloads the Bird app, they will have access to that, where in real time, they'll be able to communicate with that local point of contact as well. This city would also get a Bird account manager. This is a day-to-day point of contact for any questions, concerns, words of wisdom, to really help you build this program. Obviously, as I said before, we're a data company, so the longer we run operations, the better we get, the more trends we see. This individual is is really there to help you build and implement this scooter program. We also have, for kind of first timers, we have something that is called Warm-Up Mode. Uh, this, as I said, our scooters are governed at fifteen miles per hour Warm-Up Mode. Uh, it only allows you to go seven miles per hour, so as you're getting used to, uh, operating an electric scooter, um, it it's just kind of a a easy way to get onto them. These would be our recommended parking locations, so we'd work with the city administrators, obviously, working with your existing bike infrastructure. So, these preferred parking locations, as you see, would be implemented, uh, within the app. So, you'd be able to see where you're, uh, recommended to park, that you'd get an address, and then we can also incentivize these individuals to park there as well, so getting twenty-five cents off, ten cents off to park there. Um, just really putting them, number one, uh, when they sign up for the Bird app, they're put into a rider educational funnel, um, going through multiple tutorials, really what are the rules, the regulations, the scooter etiquette when operating a Bird scooter in Fortuna, but also hitting them with proactive messaging, and then a layering on with these preferred parking is really how we're able to shape that rider behavior. Just some other comparable cities, as I said, uh, in this new model where, uh, these, uh, middle-to-mid-sized markets in, uh, throughout the country. Uh, just before, we were only wa- operating these large metropolitan cities. Our smallest, um, community that we're now operating, it is Hartsville, um, South Carolina. They only have eight thousand people. They are absolutely crushing rides, um, and there's a couple other, uh, very comparable to Fortuna. And that is my very high-level overview. I didn't want to take up too much time, so I definitely didn't want to open it up for any questions, concerns, words of wisdom, and, uh, see what you guys think.
So, Garrett, we can't take action on this because it was just a presentation, but, um, if the council has any questions, and then we'll leave it up to you to coordinate with our city staff to figure out where you go from here. Does anyone from the council have questions?
I have one. Is it required that you wear helmets when you're driving these?
In the state of California, it is not required that you have a helmet. We do recommend them. All, uh, users have access to free helmets through the app. You just have to pay for shipping and handling, which is usually four ninety-nine. We also have implemented some tools to, um, recommend people that wear helmets. So, if you take a a selfie when you're wearing a helmet before you start your ride, you get a discount as well. So, we promote helmet use, but of course, it's not a state law, so we do not require.
Any other questions from council?
Just a comment. Um, two years ago, Lisa and I were in, uh, Washington DC, and, um, I mentioned this at the chamber meeting when Garrett did his presentation there. Um, we rented, uh, scooters, um, and, uh, a lot of fun. They're easy to use. Uh, they, you just take off on them, and and if you can ride one of those scooters or a bicycle, you can ride, you can ride a Bird. Um, and I think it would be a, um, a great addition to transportation in Fortuna.
Any other questions?
Of course, in in Washington DC, there there's hundreds, if not thousands, of Bird scooters. Um, so obviously, that's a larger scale. Um, just kind of think of this as a micro fleet, uh, starting with fifty Bird scooters. So, not a significant number, but obviously fifty more than you would have before, but really excited to have the opportunity to bring it to Fortuna.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I would just, uh, say, I saw the presentation at the chamber, and he covered a lot of area, uh, and, uh, I gave us a lot of information. This is a nice supplement to that, and it looks like something that, uh, might be very useful here.
Anyone else?
Just just a comment, Mayor Long, and, you know, so if the council would like to see this back, you know, our intention would be to come back with an agreement that the council could look at, with also feedback from our risk pool manager. And again, we've appreciated Garrett going to the Chamber of Commerce, presenting to them, presenting to staff, and so far, it sounds like a lot of the community that has seen his presentation is interested and thinks that it could be potentially a good addition. So, it's likely this will be back as a business item in the near future, if, you know, we don't, we don't see any, uh, big concerns raised or identify any other obstacles.
Excellent. Thank you. And again, use me as a resource as we kind of go through these next steps. I know we've been in constant communication throughout this process, so so looking forward to getting them on, uh, the next, on the next council and and moving forward from there.
Well, thank you for your time, Garrett. Thank you for coming to Fortuna. We appreciate that. It's always fun to have new things around town, so hopefully it will work out for everybody.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
All right. Bye. All right. Our next item is oral comments from the public. We do have a really long agenda tonight, so if anyone, uh, wants to address the council about anything not on the agenda, please keep it to three minutes. And I do know we have one public that would like to comment that maybe not, uh, doesn't know how to do the whole raise-your-hand thing. So, Erica, are you here?
I am here, Mayor Long. Thank you so much. I can't find the hand. There's no hand on my side. Um, I just, actually, about the the scooter thing, I wanted to ask a question. Um, my curiosity is liability, and the reason for that is because not to scare anyone or anything. I I think it's a great idea, and I think it's really something fun that could be brought to Fortuna. But I also do know of a friend who did have a pretty serious accident, um, you know, with a broken leg, ended up with a broken leg in twelve weeks and, uh, uh, ex, you know, tons of surgery. Anyways, I'm just curious what the liability would be to the city, or is it, um, handled through the app? Is it handled through the the company that would provide them? That's my main question on the presentation.
So, yeah, and I know the city's already checked into that, so, um, though there isn't, uh, liability to the city is is small, no different than kids playing on the playground and all those things. Merritt, did you want to add something?
Just that we'll rely on our risk pool manager to to, um, to provide us with indemnification, defense, insurance clauses, and we've already received those, and we've passed them on to Bird. So, we're we're kind of going back and forth right now, uh, in the review process, so we have those. But to answer Erica's question is, yes, we're looking at that, and our risk pool is fairly conservative in what they recommend. And the main thing for us is there there is a potential for people to get hurt, and so we want to make sure that the city's protective, and that's probably our primary concern, along with making sure that, um, you know, we're not creating any problems for businesses. And I I think they've addressed that with the way that they manage them and by having an onsite manager.
Okay. Thank you so much, Merritt. That is a great answer. And then, Mayor Long, I do have, um, a a second thing I'd like to speak on, if this would be the time. It's not an agenda. It's just a public comment. Um, it doesn't have to do with the scooters. Can I go ahead and?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, um, Honorable Mayor and City Council for being here tonight and hearing our concerns. Um, as some of you may know, I had an encounter with a group of kids a couple of weeks ago at the park. Um, I'm not going to go into great detail about that unless I'm asked specific questions about it, but it has opened up a situation for me in which I am discussing lots of things with parents and community members, and, um, have even spoken with a few of our officers about different things that are going on with a particular group of kids, um, here in Fortuna. I have had several parents reach out to me about this issue, and the reality is, is I don't necessarily know what the exact answer is. I have some ideas, but more than anything, right at this moment, I think that we need to start having a conversation about things that we can do for our teenage population, um, who are in some amount of crisis. And it's not just about having things like bike parks and community pools and skate parks and, you know, things for them to do during the day. These are teenagers who who are struggling with their family life at home, and a lot of times, they're not allowed to stay home at night. It's something that I never thought was a real thing, but it's very true that there are parents that tell their children that they're not allowed to come home at night. And I've had a few of these kids in my in my home, um, recently, and I've been able to talk to them. And I've talked to a lot of community members, and there's a lot of people out there right now that are that are scared, worried. I know you all know about the young gentleman who was shot with the twelve-gauge bird shot in the leg. Thankfully, he's okay. He's alive. But it slays me that in a city like Fortuna, with the amazing community that we have, that we have parents who are, feel like they have no answers, and that their answer is to shoot at children with shotguns. Um, it touches my heart, and I I've been a foster mom for a couple of years now, and one of the things that I know is that these teenagers especially, they need a community of people to rally around them. And I'm just hoping that here tonight, maybe I can just start a conversation with our city, with our police chief and our our police department, and any other, uh, s- social, uh, workers, you know, things that we can start having this conversation about these kids and trying to help them as much as we can. Um, and that's all I have to say on that. So, thank you very much for allowing me to be heard.
Did you time yourself?
No, but I worked really hard on not going over. I'm just going to say, we all know Erica can talk. I did. I I was watching the clock, but I didn't time myself exactly, so thank you.
So, I know that a group of people are planning on meeting with Supervisor Bushnell tomorrow or Thursday at eleven, I believe. And I, um, I'm hearing that our Chief of Police is going to be there as well, so, you know, I'm not sure as supervisors what her role is, but I know that that's who they're reaching out to. So, anyway, there is going to be more conversations, and we will just kind of see where, what it leads to.
Mayor Long, I do, I will come back and say really quickly that I think part of it is because now there are, have been an altercation down at Miranda Bridge. And so, it is something that is happening between for, you know, and so they're pulling Supervisor Bushnell in because she does work for, you know, both halves of our of our county, and I think she's vital to the conversation as well. So, I'm very happy to hear that, and if anyone would like to forward information to me about that meeting, I'd love to be a part of it. So, thank you.
I'll send you some. All right. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on anything that is not on our agenda? I believe there's a number on our screen you can call to join our meetings. So, while we are waiting to see if anyone else has any comments, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. We have three items, which include city council minutes, report of disbursements, and improvement of a revised supplemental budget request to purchase a mini excavator. Does anyone wish to pull anything? Hearing none, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent calendar items one through three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lacy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Did we receive anyone else calling in, Siana? I don't see any raised hands on my.
I don't either.
Okay. We will close public comment and move on to a discussion with the Fortuna Business Improvement District and a presentation presented by Diana Reus.
Thanks, Mayor Long. Before Diana gets started, I just wanted to say that the council did ask, they had questions for FBIT, and they wanted to hear about some of the things that they've been working on and some of their successes. And then there was also a letter that went out, uh, previously with some some concerns. And so, Diana, uh, is here with us. She's going to make a presentation, and she's going to share some of the accomplishments they have this year, as well as some of the ways that they're addressing some of the challenges coming up in the future.
Thank you, Merritt, and thanks for relating those questions over to us. And and so, I'm going to go ahead and start, and Siana is going to, um, do my slideshow for me. I appreciate her so much. And I will go ahead. Oh, I see what Erica was saying. Some of my pictures are gone. Um, well, well, thank you for having me, uh, Honorable Mayor and Council, and, uh, community members and staff. I wanted to give a a annual presentation. Every year, I give an annual presentation, our accomplishments, and what we're planning on for the future, and this year was a little bit different because I had specific things to talk about. Um, and and part of it is the reaction to COVID, and then what's happening in response to that letter that Merritt just addressed. So, um, first, I was asked to give a little history about the bid, and so, Siana, could you please go to the next slide? Thank you. So, the history of the bid, the bid started in nineteen eighty-nine, and I promise I won't make this really, really long, Sue, but it's going to be a lengthy one. Um, so, the the bid started in nineteen eighty-nine, um, was, that was when it was started. It was reformed, uh, started in in nineteen ninety. A a letter went out to the count, uh, to the business owners and said, "We're going to start a bid to develop an an effective promotional program to advertise what Fortuna businesses have to offer. It's to its local residents and regional shoppers. We're going to increase sales, um, retail sales in our community. We're going to help attract new businesses to our, uh, our Fortuna community. We're going to lobby, um, and with our government agencies, um, our media, our law enforcement, our transportation companies and vendors, um, in order to better serve our business communities. And we're going to unify our businesses by sharing a common goal, um, with financing, events, and, um, activities, and we're going to, uh, no longer do the free riders. At that time, um, a lot of businesses were paying into their own associations that they had formed, and they were asking the city for money for support on community events. And so, at this time, by creating the bid, everybody pays in, everybody is able to, um, have like the same, they're all stakeholders. So, and that was when the bid was originally formed. It regionally and in our community, um, in our businesses. Uh, it allowed people in our community to develop and carry a better, um, and carry better promotional ideas, rather than trying to, uh, spend a little here and a little here. It was a way to be cohesive. So, that was a document that was sent out. Uh, it's part of the way our bylaws were written, and it 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 gives a little meat to that. Uh, our bylaws were written thirty years ago. As part of, um, a lot of the work we've been doing over COVID has been updating our bylaws or our contract with the city, our ordinance, creating manuals that we didn't have created, and really fixing the infrastructure of the bid in order to better serve our community. Um, and so, I the, I can keep going on about history, but I know that it's going to be a long meeting, so I will, um, I'll go ahead and go on to the next slide. Um, so, what we've been doing in the last, um, fifteen months. So, I I spoke at the City of the City Breakfast. I think it was in, Renee can correct me, but I think it was the first week of February or the last week of January in twenty twenty, and then a month later, COVID hit. And so, we all know what happened there. And so, businesses, um, what we've been able to do. So, we, a lot of the questions that we get, um, from council members, from community members, from our constituents are, "What is the benefit to me for the bid?" And the, and so, I'm going to talk about some of the benefits that happened in the last few months. And by few months, I mean fifteen months, really. And small business loans, we partnered with the City of Fortuna and and the Chamber of Commerce, and worked on, um, getting small business loans out with some of our redevelopment money. I guess one of the things that I didn't mention in the history was, when the bid was formed, there was a redevelopment. And then when I started in two thousand and nine, the redevelopment was going away. And so, we kind of took in where we could and adapted where we needed to adapt. The nice thing about, uh, documents that are thirty years old is they gave a lot of room for flexibility because they were pretty vague. And so, we were able to, we've been able to, over the years, adapt, um, what needs to happen into our community. Um, that's going to be changing as we create new manuals and bylaws and, uh, work plans, um, that are really more specific to what we actually do. And as staff changes, as, um, Board of Directors change, as city council change, as city managers change, as finance directors change, um, that changes what the bid does and what we focus on. But, um, for the most part, we believe that our new manuals that we're working on, um, will give a better focus, uh, an explanation of what the bid does for our community. Uh, so, we started helping with the small business loans, um, thanks to REDEC and the support. And we got those grant applications, or excuse me, loan applications out to a a handful of businesses that needed them. Only a couple of them jumped on it as they waited for their PPP and their idle funding to come in. So, that was, that was part of what we did, but we did work, um, really closely with businesses and, um, REDEC in order to get those funding out. And we partnered, and we partnered with, um, no, we didn't partner, excuse me. When the California, Lindis, a California Relief Grant came out in December of, um, twenty twenty, um, it was an opportunity for FBIT to actually help our business community. Here is something tangible that we could put our hands on and help small businesses. And we took out a hundred packets. We printed up their their webinar, um, which was not their application. It was just a webinar. Uh, and we dropped off that Uh and we dropped off that to over uh eighty-five, it was over eighty-five businesses. Almost a hundred businesses received those packets. And and then we followed up and those, that became pretty overwhelming. I don't know how to do this. I don't know where to start. I'm barely surviving. I don't even know if my employees are gonna come back when it's time to reopen. We were hearing tons of different conversations related to um even applying for free money. And I know some people will say it's not free. Um, but it was something that could help businesses at that time. And so we focused on women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. That was our main focus. And 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 happy Pride Month, by the way, my dog. Yay. Um, but we, we, that was where our focus was. Um, and then we then grew it to anybody else that needed help. Um, but we needed to start with those, with those business owners in our community uh because that's what the ri- the grant was starting us with. And then we left from there and um we ended up completing uh thirty-one applications through our office um that were funded. And that, that turned around into two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of grant money uh just to our help. We also, as part of that, um those eighty-five to a hundred applications, fifteen to twenty businesses did the grants on their own. They didn't need our support. They didn't need our help. They appreciated us giving them the little nudge, but they didn't need us. And so it was great. It allowed us to spend time with the businesses that actually did need us. And we spent approximately two hundred and eighty hours. And one of the things that Merritt asked me to do and which was really eye-opening and kind of overwhelming um was to track how much time we spend on specific projects and track how much time we're spending. Um, we keep a, a really detailed call log that we started in October. And and it's all of our correspondence. And so we were able to break that down by how much time we spent on the applications, how much time we spent with the community members and business owners. And we were able to spend two hundred and eighty hours from December thirtieth to um to now. We're still helping businesses today. We had two businesses sign um docu-signs to get funding. So that's pretty exciting. And we have some other grants that we're assisting others um business owners with that are from SBA. Um, it was something tangible that we could do to help our business community. And we have forty thousand dollars pending. Um, and then we have fifty thousand dollars worth of businesses that we're not able to get funding. Uh, and so we just, um, the county created a really nice site um with other grant opportunities. If this grant doesn't fit for you, maybe this one will. And so we've been sending that link out like crazy to local vets, local um hairdressers, uh we've sent it out to restaurant owners and other opportunities, other grant sources that the county is putting all together for local business owners. So that's pretty nice that they're able to do that and we're able to send that out.
Yeah, right. Can I just check in with you one second? Should we be advancing the PowerPoint?
Oh, yes, please. That's fine.
I, I didn't know if you-
Yeah, I know. I have it on my little notes. Like, ask to, I have it. Sorry. Thank you. Um, part of the other member benefits that we were able to do and this year was the county, um Susan Seaman, Mayor of Eureka, also with Arcade Economic Development Corporation, AEDC, um wrote a grant to get a PPE delivered and for our local small business owners. And as part of that, we received pallets as of supplies that were, that we brought to our um my husband, I took my husband's van and my car and filled it up and we brought it to the city. Um, two pickup trucks also. And thanks to Greg and Scott Adair uh who came and brought that and Alicia at the county. And we were able to get those out in our community. We still have about one case of um sanitizer left. Um, and then we just heard that OES is gonna be breaking down and their Joint Information Center. And because they're doing that, they're gonna be able to give us more PPE to give out to our local businesses. And we're getting requests on those all the time. Um, we were able also to give some to local sports activities as they were get, getting together. Uh, the chamber had requested some for softball and some for little uh for Little League. And so we were able to get those um to them and it was really nice. Other um opportunities that we were able to do for local businesses is the county opened up a restart and recovery grant through their Economic Development Department. Uh, local businesses were able to apply for funding and to get reimbursed and so that way they could get, get reimbursed for their expenses and on COVID-related activities. Uh, FBIT was also a recipient of one of those grants. Um, but it was something that we were able to assist and businesses with. Um, during COVID, okay, I think Sienna can go next. Thanks, Merritt. I would have forgot.
Hang on, I'm having a glitch here.
Okay.
Ooh, it won't let me go any further.
Okay, perfect. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a lot of talking then. Um, oh, there we go. Perfect. Um, events, people, I got, I got a comment last week. Uh, people miss seeing you. Where are you at? How come you're not doing things? It's COVID and we're not doing things and we're not out in the community like we were. We're doing things on the backend, helping businesses where we can. And one of the things that we were able to, or a couple of the things that we were able to do this year um was the Electric Lighter Parade. And thanks to Redwood Village Shopping Center for putting together and that with our office. And we did Shop Fortuna for, for the holidays, encouraging people to spend local money. And this year, thanks to Cameron at Parks and Rec, we were able to change and the kids' free movies. We do that as in exchange, thanks to the City Council as well, um for our office rent. Um, and we took that money and we bought forty dollar, um so a family could go to the movies, a forty dollar um kids' free movie ticket. Um, these are gift card. And then we gave those out um as a thank you for shopping local and people could enter to win. And so it ended up working out really well. We mailed um the prizes to the winners. And the theater should be opening up very soon. As soon as we get a little bit more staffing, they'll be able to open and then people can start using those gift certificates that they won at the holidays for doing business locally. Uh, another part of that, we were able to do the Shop Small Saturdays this year. Um, so it was another event that we were still able to do during COVID, um encouraging local business owners to um offer a sale, offer a discount, or just have goodies. I know it's weird, but um for COVID, but um it come into uh our business and and do that. And so we were able to um to have that event as well and get the free merchandise, thanks to American Express, and get that out to our communities. And we also helped the downtown merchants with some decorations for fall. And Chris Broadstock at Tri Counties and I went down to the corns and the corn crib down at, and they donated corn husk to go around um the light poles. And we were able to partner with Fortuna Fabrics came out, Gold Leaf Media, and Chris and myself, and we were able to zip tie those around the uh light poles during the fall. So we added a little festivities, even though we didn't get to have apple harvest. Okay, Sienna, you can go to the next one, please. Um, as part of that, oh, this is some of the types of the industry. Somebody asked, what kind of businesses are you helping get funding? Uh, we helped local restaurants. Uh, we helped the local print shops, local shoe stores, uh hair salons, uh nail salons, dog groomers, uh a local construction company, uh and some, and many local retail businesses um apply for some of those uh industry grants. A, a lot of them, oh, massage, we had a massage um um, a massage company that we assisted. Uh, oh, oh, again, a lot of them would have never applied for the funding without us. Um, I had a tip, a business came in today to drop off another tax document so we could scan. And I was like, let me take pictures. And and so I took some pictures and of course I forgot to put it on the slide. So, um, but it, it was really nice to help um small mama pops that normally don't reach out to the bid, but we were able to reach out to them through this grant opportunity. And then now we have really great connections with them. And we um, we know that that will just open the door for many more conversations with them um on business support and services. Okay, Sienna, I think I'm ready with that one. Okay, and so in the beginning of COVID, um we applied for a grant. It was in May of twenty twenty um through the Humboldt Lodging Alliance. Um, they had reached out and said, what are we gonna do about hotels and stays and hotels? Um, it was before all the fires. So there, the hotels weren't booked in the beginning and then all of a sudden they were really booked. But we were able to do a marketing campaign out of the area um to coincide with our mission and to coincide with um COVID and how to, how to respond um to that. So we did, uh, we applied for a grant. It also allowed for staff at the time and when COVID was gonna start was we had planned on laying off Bernie McKenna, our assistant. And she's the Assistant Director at the bid. And she worked twelve hours prior to COVID and and about, about twelve hours a week. Um, with the grant, we were able to get her up to thirty hours a week. Um, and then we were also able to hire Allison Stanfield um to work about ten hours. So we were able to get essentially a full-time person back in the office assisting with um the California Relief Grants, the, the HLA Grants, um business support. And it was a lot. We, when, when we started COVID, we went from the, our office to my house and it was twenty eighteen to twenty-hour days, like people calling or stressed or texting. And it was the time that I needed to just to be the most available uh as possible. And so um it was, it's been by far the hardest year I've ever worked for the bid. It's been the busiest. It's, it's been fulfilling to work um so intimately with businesses and um help them during their hardest year. And it's, it's been a real privilege to um to be the Executive Director of the bid and assist businesses during COVID. So as part of that, we got a grant um in order to market our community. It felt really uncomfortable to market our community out of the area when we're sheltering in place. Um, but it was really important um to the hotels that we continued having the conversation about the Il River Valley, Fortuna, the Redwood Coast. And so we created a campaign that fit really well with our mission of business recruitment, business retention, tourism, hospitality, serving our local businesses. So we applied for funding. Seventy percent of the grant um was utilized for Lost Coast or Get Lost and Find Yourself. And fifteen percent of it doing business organically and fifteen percent of it on safe secluded small town. And as part of it all was a getaway giveaway to come stay in Fortuna. Um, and so I'm gonna give some uh explanation on that because I know lots of people have lots of questions and lots of critics about this. Who knew? I didn't know that I would have um so many people so excited and they're not so excited about this campaign. So Sienna, I think you can go to the next slide. And so these are some banners that we had made um to go with them. The questions that we were getting were, how does this have to do with Fortuna? Like, explain this to us. So I'm gonna explain it to you and I hope that it makes really clear sense because it made sense to us. And they're down and I promise you, they will never go back up again. Um, because there's so many critics. But um they were beautiful and they were great and we love every bit of it. So um what does it mean for a safe secluded small town and what were we promoting out of the area? So safe secluded small town. Have you ever lived on the coast? Have you found yourself dreaming of the fa- of a not-so-fast-paced life? We'll turn your dreams into reality. We were asking people to relocate to a safe, secluded and small town. It was COVID. People were working remote. And so it made sense. So we spent fifteen percent of our budget on letting people know how amazing our community was, what our real estate market was like, how fast the houses were selling. If you wanna build, we have buildable land. If you wanna, you know, so that was what, really what we were working with that safe secluded small town. It was a great time for local business owners that work remote to work remote from our beautiful city of Fortuna. And the next part of it was, um, the next part of it was the Get Lost and Find Yourself. You know, I'll go and, excuse me, I'll do Doing Business Organically. What does it mean to do business organically? I have no idea. We're not an organic city. What does that mean? We have an organic brewery. We have an organic um vodka distillery right here manufactured in our community. But that's not what it meant. We were talking about wholesome places to live, to promote our community. So what we said was, what does it mean to do business organically? It's the course of gradually or naturally developing your business. What a great time during COVID to naturally develop and grow your business. This was the opportunity to do it. And our safe secluded small town totally made sense for it. It was part of our business relocation campaign. We talked about um our commercial vacancies that we had open. We sent lots of information. Um, we talked about our five hundred-plus businesses, about our community that supports our community to grow our community. We're a community that loves ourselves. Like, we love Fortuna so much that we want to grow ourselves with people that also love it. And those were the messages we were putting out there. We had beautiful ads. I think, Sienna, if you can go to the next one. And these were some of our safe secluded small town ads. Sorry, some of them are pixelated because they're not meant to be on the screen. Um, it beautiful pictures of our community and then, um, Doing Business Organically, we talked about just what a great place to foster our community and grow and support each other. So that was what our Doing Business Organically campaign was. Fifteen percent of our budget went towards that. And then the final seventy percent went to Get Lost and Find Yourself. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and say this. So what does it mean to get lost and find yourself? Um, in COVID, what we were saying was, you know, you're, everyone is home alone, right? Like, we're home, we're sheltering in place, we're keeping to ourself. So go find yourself and find yourself on the lost coast. That was what we were saying. Come to the Il River Valley. Find yourself in our redwood trees. Find yourself within our community. So Fortuna has more uh more tourist destinations. It's your next stop in California. Find your favorite outdoor getaways, hike, bike, fish, horseback riding, kayak along the Il River. All of those things were things that we were able to give away in our packages as part of the get, getaway giveaway. Um, and so we were able to promote that out of the area. What we shouldn't have done might because of all of the critics that didn't understand or didn't call and ask was we were trying to create that message that we were putting out, that we were marketing to those people so that way they would come to our community and see a cohesive image that matched our marketing materials. We marketed ourselves in twenty zip codes. Four hours down the one oh one, four hours north the one oh one, four hours down I five and four hours north, uh, north of I five and then across twenty. Um, and, and that we got great response from. Um, we partnered with a, a local marketing firm, Eddie Alexander, did, did a lot of Eureka, City of Eureka's marketing campaign. It ended up working out really well for us. Um, and we were really happy with the work that they were able to do. They were really happy that we came with ready-made ads. We've already picked our demographics and we really wanted to make it. Um, the people that we know that come and support our community. And so we were able to do that. So that is, um, that is the marketing campaign. And it also allowed us to pay for staff. It was, it is the one and only grant. Um, or no, excuse me, we have one other grant that we were allowed to help pay for staff time, but for the most part, staff time wasn't able. I, I'm telling um this council, I told my board this. I could not have done this, any support for our local business community and a marketing campaign and community events at this year without staff. And so Allison and Bernie have made it possible. Um, and the grants that we received have made it possible. And, and so that, that's, um, Sienna, can you go to the next slide? So that's about our marketing campaign. And some of the materials that we did was we purchased the banners um on Main Street. And we uh purchased merchandise that we gave to people. It was great. People have been sending us pictures that have won our packages. We gave thirty night stays of hotel and Fortuna, um including packages to local fishermen, local crabbers. We did to local kayaking. Um, and uh Kim Karobi, our local horseback riding, really tried to um to keep people here. And Bernie McKenna did a great job. She wrote a wonderful uh itinerary for each person custom to wherever they were coming from. If they were coming from the valley or coming from Portland, they had a custom like, stop here, stop here. When you get here, you wanna eat at this restaurant. Here's your options for different types of food that we have. And it was really good because it was custom for those businesses. And and so I, I really appreciate that. And then, um, and so that, that, that is our Get Lost and Find Yourself. And on that, I did wanna just pitch some numbers because we had some people that asked questions related, related to our digital um campaign. Um, we had a brand awareness of nineteen point two million ad impressions. Not to mention the ads that were paid for. So the, it was a big one for us. Our cost per click was about one dollar and thirty-five cents. They, we were trying to make sure it was at a dollar. So we, we felt really good with the results from the campaign. Um, and, and, and so that's it. So we're excited about that. So that's what those banners mean. And I, I appreciated Tammy Trent. I was taking about an hour one night talking to me like, you gotta break it down. So thanks, Tammy, for asking questions. And, and, and trying to better understand what, what that was. Um, during this time, okay, Sienna, you can go to the next one, please. Thank you. And during the next, um, other things that we were able to do this year for membership benefits and or, um, uh was some self, some self-classes. Uh, Bernie and myself had attended some trainings and- uh, was some self, some self classes. Uh, Bernie and myself had attended some trainings and webinars. We're working with two different organizations that we're trying to find funding for. We're gonna start applying for some more grants. Um, one is called Placer AI. It's a system for, um, business recruitment retention. And they can track where people are coming in and out of your community. Our hope is that, um, if we were to use it, it's a way to drive economic sales and, and business. And the hope is that we could find where is our weak point in our cities that we aren't getting a lot of people and how can we grow our business, um, in those areas? And maybe we put cannabis in those businesses that people aren't driving. We can also track to see where people are leaving our community and going to Eureka or McKinleyville or Arcata or Garberville and see where they're spending their time. Um, we know we're a bedroom community. What are people doing out of the area? Where are they working? What do we need? Where it would help us with a business recruitment and plan and a business retention plan? So, um, that's one, um, webinar that we've been able to sit through and part of our future planning for the bid. Um, another one, um, we were working with a company that puts, um, security cameras. Um, some of you may have known, years ago, Hans Koster had a web, a webcam downtown and a webcam at the park. And lots of community members were able to follow that feed and see what's happening and how is rodeo and how are all the activities happening down there? And so we're working with the company to possibly put in webcams, uh, at the shopping centers, at our three shopping centers, Midtown, Redwood Village and Strong's Creek, possibly down at the, um, Riverwalk area. And then of course downtown and possibly at the park. So, um, of course we need funding for that. And so we're applying for more grants to see if we can do that. It, it'll be a great tool for vandalism, for graffiti. And it will, car thefts, homeless. It will be an opportunity for us to recruit, um, people that wanna come and see our events without coming to our events right away and they can kinda see the buzz and, um, and we can get, create, uh, a source for that. So we're really excited about working with those two, uh, organizations to help with, um, business recruitment, recruitment retention. And the last thing I wanna say about business retention was Fortuna bucks. Um, in twenty nineteen, I announced that Fortuna bucks were disbanded and we weren't gonna be doing them. And we're gonna switch to a Visa format of Fortuna bucks. And what does that look like? We were able to do that, um, this year. Um, we have custom Fortuna bucks created. We do have low inventory right now, but when we started talking about that, we got a, we immediately partnered with the Fortuna Fire Santa Slay Program, who normally, um, give the teenagers some kind of gift card. And they were struggling on which ones to get and how to get them. And so we did custom, uh, shop Fortuna and shop local shop Fortuna from Fire Santa Slay. And we were able to do fifteen hundred dollars worth of Fortuna bucks that went to that organization to support our local businesses. And following that, thanks to a connection, I'm pretty sure Becky Jacobini had a connection with, and she was so connected with the hospital, that the hospital's employee association, um, the Redwood Memorial Hospital Medical Staff purchased over five thousand dollars of custom Fortuna buck gift cards in order to, um, spend money locally in, uh, our community for the holidays. So we're really happy with the, um, with the new Fortuna box. Um, we're encouraging people. Um, some of them were sold and given away at, at the, um, for graduation, which was nice. Um, they're really cool. And, and so please place orders and then we can keep ordering more. So, um, that's it for business retention that I'm gonna re, re, restart or go on. And then Siana, if you can go to the next slide, I'm talking about business recruitment. So what do you do to recruit business? It's one of the biggest questions that we get. Um, how are you recruiting them? And for a long time, a lot of it wasn't about us recruiting businesses. It was a lot about responding, 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 responding and building connections and connecting. And so, um, for years, we've kept a spreadsheet database of vacancies. And then if it's no longer vacant, who filled it in? And if somebody has closed, what went in there now? Um, and so we have a pretty, uh, pretty awesome, um, list of vacancies in the city of Fortuna. And so over COVID, we were able to help utilize people filling those. Um, I had a local business owner that said, we have more vacancies now than we did have prior to COVID. And we have the database list and we can say that we don't, that over, over twenty vacancies that were vacant prior to COVID have been filled since COVID. And we've only added a handful of them. So we're really close, um, on, um, we, we keep, we keep a good track of it. And we are gonna share that. Uh, you have an economic development specialist, um, Jennifer, uh, Orie Brown, Jennifer Brown. Uh, she is, has asked for that list. We're gonna share it with her and hopefully she can help knock things out and fill those vacancies as well. Uh, it's, it's super excited to partner, um, and, and work with the city on the vacancies. But for business recruitment, we maintain a website. We launched a new website. Oh, I guess I should have said that. We launched a new website during COVID, um, way more e, user friendly for us. Uh, lot prettier and, uh, able to keep it maintained with vacancies, job listings. Job listings are crazy, so it's really hard to stay on top of that, cause everybody has jobs opening right now. Um, but it's a, it is an opportunity for our business recruitment and, and, and then our contacts. So, um, a big question has been, what are you doing for new business? And how many new businesses are you, are you working with? And so over COVID, we started our tracking system in November, in October. October, I think it was October thirteenth is when our, our spreadsheet started with our correspondence logs. In that, from October fifteenth until yesterday, we had thirty-five new businesses that we are working with in order to find a location, help with business plans, um, create, um, and create, uh, get connected with marketing and funding, um, to open their business. And so we are working with a lot of new businesses. Um, and so some of those offices, somebody said, what kind of businesses are you helping? We need retail. We know we need retail. We need retail really, really bad. But, uh, we're working with doctors' offices, chiropractors, psychologists, psychiatrists, senior resource, or, um, Senior Recovery Housing Center. We're working with, um, local restaurants that wanna go into the sushi boat, another local restaurant that's interested in developing on Riverwalk. Um, I never give names, because it's not real until it's real, until I see a business license. And Danielle sends me an updated list and says, look at all the new businesses. It's very exciting. And we have, um, two different childcare facilities that would like to open up some kind of childcare facility in the city of Fortuna that can be a drop off. And so, um, two different businesses, um, they do not know each other. Both looking for entities, have not been able to find one. We've been working with them since, I think it was October or September, October is when we started working with those businesses. Still have yet to find the perfect location. But it is a need in our community and we will continue to serve and help businesses find a location to open those childcare facilities. Um, we worked with, um, the Practice Pad, which is a new school of rock and recording studio at four ninety, um, Fortuna Boulevard, helping him, uh, write his business plan, get connected with local businesses, and get his merchandise. He wanted to get banners and connecting him with, um, Alan at Fortuna Signs. And then I think he got connected with other printers to get some merchandise printed. So he's really excited. We have another thrift store about to open, um, or getting ready to open, which is, we're kind of known for antique shops in our thrift stores. And that is our retail and we'll take it. And so, and that's in the works. Um, we're working with the specialty food service. And when B and Padre closed, a lot of, um, the cooks up from B and Padre were looking, how do we continue to make the products, continue to serve our local restaurants that B and Padre was working with? So we're working, um, we have, um, uh, tortilla wholesaler that's working on getting, um, getting up, up and active in a local commercial kitchen. So those are types of businesses that we're assisting. Um, and then service-based businesses include, um, nonprofits seeking local, uh, seeking locations. Lots of people seeking locations, property managers seeking locations, personal assistant, um, business service and, uh, cosmetologists, estheticians. And then as, on, on top of all of that, we're working with some private investors that are looking to locally invest in some local buildings. Um, and then we're looking at, um, business owners that are developers, that developers that are looking um, for the right location to develop something for their clients. So we are doing stuff in, um, I know people say, I'm not seeing you at community events, but we are working with a lot of community business owners and, uh, Fortuna. Um, Siana, if you can please go to the next slide. I swear, Sue, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, the last couple of things I just wanted to talk about is in helping all of these businesses with grants, knowing that the city does not have more funding to help the bid and knowing that we can't go after the businesses for asking for more assistance to help them, to help us help them. Um, we were able to apply for some funding. And we partnered with the Headwaters Fund and, um, the County Economic Development um, and OES in order to notify all the businesses at the time um, when reopening plans were required. We wrote the grant and we were able to, uh, create a flyer, um, that went out to over, um, six thousand business owners throughout the county, um, and to serve our local, um, businesses. And that was a grant that we wrote. We wrote, um, a grant for the Small Business Restart and Recovery Grant, which covered some, uh, Allison's staff time. So that was really exciting, cause then it added a little more staff time into her. We got the HLA sixty thousand dollar grant. And then recently, we've received a new HLA marketing grant for twenty-five thousand. As a pat on the back and thanks for all the hard work that we did on the last marketing grant. That grant is only to be used for marketing, um, at our discretion for the community, um, starting this, um, upcoming fiscal year. It actually can start anytime. So we're working right now on a marketing plan for that, to get that one launched, uh, and working for our community. Um, uh, Siana, the next one is our Board of Directors. Uh, we have lots of board seats coming open. And we have, our city council spot is open. And Bailey Davy will be the incoming chamber president. Um, and I don't wanna talk for Renee, but that's exciting for her. But, um, we're super sad, but she's gonna be appointing somebody to serve the chamber on our board. The downtown merchants are working on getting someone to serve for Brian Gonzalez. Um, Erica Thompson is our board president. Her term is also coming up. Um, and then Matt Costa Grande, who came in, we had a vacancy for a long time for Redwood Village Shopping Center. Matt said, I'll step up and do it. Helped with this, um, light parade a couple of years and his term is coming up and so he'll be stepping off. So we have lots of positions. If you wanna serve your business community, it's a great way to do it. We'll now have a board manual. Um, and I'm about to get to that. So the next slide, Siana, and my last one, I promise you. Um, is as part of this, um, planning, um, accountability, we, um, we, we had scheduled a board retreat. Um, the board retreat, we hired Jess Pa, Jessica Pettit, Jess Pettit, uh, from Good Enough Now. And she's a local, she's local, but she's not, doesn't work, um, locally. And she travels three hundred days out of the year. Um, and, and hasn't really connected with local communities, uh, her local communities. And this year we were able to connect with her and she has facilitated, uh, many, 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 many hours of, um, a board retreat for us in helping us create, uh, new manuals, staff manuals, board manuals, core area manuals, updating our city contract, updating our bylaws and updating, um, what we would like to see the city ordinance updated. And we'll be bringing those back to the council, obviously for some, um, review and the city, and city manager, of course, for some review and staff, um, from staff in adjustments, um, of what we actually do and what makes sense for serving our community. And so I think that's it. Or I did wanna just want, one more time, just remind everybody that, um, we appreciate, um, the ability to serve our business community. And we're thankful for everybody, um, that has, um, been a supporter of the bid and has, um, not been a supporter of the bid. It makes us stronger and, and it, and it allows us to find out where our weak, where our weak points are and let us address them, so that way we can, um, better serve our community. So I, I think that's all I'm gonna talk about. I, it's my understanding that there may be some questions from the council. And, and hopefully I can be able to address this.
Thank you, Diana. Does the council have questions for Diana? All of that? No one has any questions?
Uh, please, you better answer quest, uh, ask questions. This is your opportunity.
Okay, I have, I have a question. So, um, a lot of the things that you talked about tonight, you did as a result of COVID over the last fifteen months.
Yes.
So COVID going away, someone else opening up, what direction are you headed now? What does that look like? Because so much of your time was spent dealing with that. Now what?
Yeah, so, um, in the, as part of our work plan, um, which we, we have really haven't had an, a, a real opportunity to develop it. During our board retreat, we've created ten agendas with just items that we've just discussed and thrown out. And I'm like, writing them all down. I'm like, oh my gosh, talk about a long agenda. Um, we're gonna have to go through a lot. But there, it's gonna be a creating, uh, business recruitment plan, a business retention plan and less of the warm and fuzzy, oh, this is what we do, more of specifics, um, in, in, in serving our businesses. Um, and then doing, I think, a, a lot less hands-on with, um, the core areas. Um, the way that the city ordinance is written and the way that the bylaws are written and the way that our contract is written is really that these core areas should be running on their own with some support um, financially from the bid, because they assess themselves higher in order to spend their assessments. But really to just run their organizations and let us help where we can. And so I, I would like to see, um, more business recruitment, more business retention and less hands-on, less events for me. I, that would be, I think, where I see, you know, the bid really serving our, better serving our community. Letting the, um, the chamber be that, um, the weekly meetings and the mixers and really being that face for our community and really just serving the businesses on the backend. And of course, um, we have a board meeting on Thursday. We, we're having board meetings every Thursday, uh, every other Thursday for the next few months, as we have so many items to knock out. And so, uh, as council business owners, um, please serve your community and, and please serve them by, by for the business community. Um, we're not for everybody. Not all six hundred businesses need services from, that we offer. But others need a lot of service that we offer. And so it really does balance it out, you know? I, I don't know that I've ever helped Went Construction, um, but I know that I have helped other businesses a lot more, you know? So, but it is something that we plan on focusing is really creating a retention and a recruitment plan that, that can better serve our community and less of the making everyone feel warm and fuzzy for seeing me when they really want me doing work. And so I'm happy to do it. And this has been a testament of that, uh, doing more work on the backend. So I, I hope that answered your question.
It did. Anyone else have questions for Diana while she's here?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, I, the question I hear most of the time from business is what does the bid do? And what does the, what does it do for me? I would suggest, because, and this, this is because why do we have to pay them? So maybe a little short brochure of, you know, when, because that, our businesses licenses are coming back up. So maybe a little brochure that goes out with tha- that assessment saying, you know, contact us if this is the services you need. This is how we would like to help you. This is, you know, what we do. So they kinda know what that fee they're paying for, you know, and what you do for that. You know, it kinda gives them a little bit of an explanation, instead of why am I paying this? What's this for? You know, so it, it kind of explains things a little bit more.
Perfect. And I think that'll be a lot of our board, uh, uh, that's gonna be a lot of our board, um, outreach too, is that, you know, it's hard to explain when you have pretty vague documents, what your board is supposed to do. I mean, and so we're creating these new, it's hard to recruit board members when we're trying to, you know, really define what the board is going to be doing and what staff is gonna be doing. And as we revamp all of these documents, it will help create that. So I think, I thank you for that, Tammy. We used to have a brochure. It was, in fact, we just threw them away, cause they were so dated. It just didn't make sense anymore. But yeah, we can definitely get something like that created and then mailed out to the business owners. I did have one business owner that used to say, every time I got something from the bid, I used to throw it away, like, yeah, it's just spam. Like, ah, it stresses you out when you put time and energy into, in mailing, and it, you know? So, but yes, I, I do agree. People need to know what the bid does. I think it's definitely a focus of our board. Um, they want to be more about what, you know, cheerleader and name plugs for the bid and less of the background. Um, I'm a, I'm a worker, I'm a doer. And so it worked well for me, I thought, uh, until it didn't and it's not. So we're making some changes. So I appreciate that feedback and I think that the board would totally concur with you.
Maybe even something on the application where you have to pay your fee with your business license. It may be on the bottom or someplace saying, for more information on the bid and give them your, you know, your email or your webpage or something like that, just something right there. So if they have questions or that more curiosity while they're paying that bill, they can go right there and get it, the information that they need.
I love it. Erin, did you hear that? I'm happy to stamp something on the bottom of those forms.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you guys for allowing me to talk. I really appreciate your partnerships over the years and your relationships and. And everything that we've been able to accomplish over the years and and it's not perfect and I'm not perfect and I admit to that all the time. So and Merritt, did I cover all of the questions that you were hoping I would cover?
I think so.
Okay, if not, I'm, our office is open Monday through Friday from nine to four and by cell phone all the time. So you're welcome to call me anytime and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everybody.
All right, before we.
And happy Pride Month. Yay.
Any other questions for Diana? All right, seeing none, you're off the hook. Thank you, Diana.
Mayor Long.
Yes, who said that?
It is. Erica Thompson, I am.
We are having a really hard time.
The Fbid Board, may I speak here now in our presentation? We are hearing me because I'm my children. That's what's happening right now. Can you hear me? Okay, let me go inside. Can you hear me now better?
Can hear you better. We'll give you just a couple of minutes.
Okay, I just, I just really only need about sixty seconds and I just want to say. That part of what has fluffed us up. Is that we've realized that we do have some things to update and we do have some things to change at the Fbid Board. And that we are working very hard, very diligently to do that. We spent as a board many hours in a board retreat and we've spent hours in meetings with Merritt. And we want you guys to know that at the heart of Fbid. Our passion and our mission is to help businesses in the city of Fortuna. And as the president of Fbid and sitting on this board for probably longer than I should have. Um, just wanting to help and be a part of the city. That we are working very diligently to get, like Diana said, we're updating documents. We have things that haven't been updated from nineteen ninety-four. And I would just like to throw my part in it and say, you know, I've been the president for a very long time. But I was never truly trained on how to do that. And we are now moving forward and I really hope that the council. Understands that we are here with open arms and open hearts to work together with the council and with any other business organization in our city. To work together for the betterment of Fortuna. And we're not worried about whose lane is what lane. We just want to help. We understand that we have a few things that we need to work on and address and make clear. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. I want to say thank you very much to Diana Rios and her staff. They are the backbone of this operation so far. And we are working very diligently to have a board that understands their roles and what needs to happen for the betterment of Fortuna. So thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for letting Diana speak. And we really appreciate you guys and your wanting to understand what it is that we do here. Because we do love Fortuna and we are very much for us also, all success across the board. So thank you.
Exactly, Erica. We are a community and we all need to work together. And so I just appreciate you guys. And be willing to be part of Fortuna and to, you know, serve our business community. So thank you again. And we're gonna move on now to our chambers. We have. Presentation and a request for funding support for the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And I know that Renee Lindsay is here for that. Merritt, did you want to start it off?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know that I did put a little bit of information regarding this request and had taken a look at it. But essentially, I want to give a little bit of budget background. The city has traditionally provided funding to the Chamber of Commerce in three ways. One of those is through Measure W, which includes ten percent of the transient occupant tax or TOT collected for short term stays within the city. We also, the city has also traditionally for a long time, provided general funds to support the chamber. The general Chamber of Commerce activities, not through the Tourism and Marketing Committee. And then also through a rent forgiveness or no cost rent at at some of the city facilities that are used for the events. Such as a Monday Club and the Chamber Office. In the in the past years, the city contributed approximately eighteen thousand from the general fund. Five thousand of that was facility rental forgiveness and approximately thirteen thousand was a direct cash contribution to support the Chamber of Commerce. In twenty fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the city had a very conservative budget due to COVID. Because of the expected reduction in sales tax revenue. And as a result, the council elected to reuse the general fund support to the chamber by. Ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, which included elimination of the thirteen thousand dollar. Cash contribution and increasing the rental forgiveness by three thousand. The chambers requested that the city provide additional financial support to the chamber by reinstating the thirteen thousand dollar cash contribution. And also considering funding to effort, funding, funding in effort to recruit retail businesses within the city of Fortuna. Renee Lindsay included a letter, the chamber CEO and president, provided a letter detailing the reason for the request. And that's attached to the council staff report. The chamber through the Tourism and Marketing Committee has also recently engaged a consultant to assist with retail recruitment. In order to attract businesses that may be interested in establishing this city, the chamber would like the council to consider partnering in the project. And contributing general funds to the project in an amount of ten thousand dollars. The chamber is not dependent on this contribution, but by the city providing this funding, the chamber would preserve Measure W funds for additional activities to promote tourism and marketing. So the firm to selected for this work was Retail Strategies. Jen Brown, our economic development, our part-time economic development specialist, will be providing a brief overview of that project. And the the chamber also extended that invitation to Fbid. If they wanted to include and will be looking for other stakeholders who might want to participate in this retail recruitment effort. So I'll hand it over to Jen to make a presentation and followed by Jen, Renee will be making a brief. Presentation of the chamber request for the support to their budget. So this is a discussion item. I just wanted to remind the council. So. We're not asking for the council to make any decisions in the in this presentation. But if you do want to consider the request, when we get to the budget item and the business items, then you have that opportunity to do so. Or to come back at a later time with a supplemental budget request. So with that, I'd turn it over to Jen and again, Jen and Renee. Jen and Renee, I just remind you that we do, it's already been a long meeting and if you can keep, keep your comments as as direct as possible. Strategies is on the line and I think he's available to answer questions. So that'll turn it over to Jennifer Brown.
Hi, um, can I share my screen, Siana?
Yes, you should be able to.
I'm in Chatterley here. Okay, hi, guys. I'm really excited to be here. My name is Jennifer Brown. I'm the Temporary Part-Time Economic Development Specialist here. Kind of like an experiment, I guess, with COVID. It's kind of like the theme of the city trying new things. And I was brought on to kind of address TDBG and other things. And I was already on the Tourism and Marketing Committee before hired, before I was hired with the city. And now I'm kind of involved in this as city staff. And so I've been a part of this conversation for about four to six months and it's really exciting and it's one of the. One of the most exciting projects I've been able to participate in, participate in. So I'm really thankful to be with the city at this time. For this. So I'm, I'm going to explain to you what Retail Strategies is and what kind of services they provide. And then kind of jump on what Diana is saying and the city is. Working on future opportunities for the city, the chamber and Fbid to work together towards retail recruitment and other opportunities. Jump in. So Retail Strategies is a national advisory firm focused on retail market analysis, strategic planning, retail recruitment and development. Their mission is to provide real estate expertise, tools and human effort that position deserving towns as alluring locations for national businesses. The services they provide, they provide data collection and analysis, presentation of data and findings. And we get to keep the data, which is really exciting. I'll talk about that later. Outreach to property owners, brokers, developers, retailers, restaurants and all other industries suitable for community on behalf of Fortuna. And they'll also promote Fortuna at retail real estate conferences. This was, this is the press release from Retail Strategies that was actually released two days. So that's really exciting. And Matt, thank you for staying. Matt is in a different time zone, so his children are probably asleep by now. But he's sticking with us and he's going to be available for comments or questions at the end of this presentation. So Retail Strategies appreciates the momentum and effort being taken by the chamber in Fortuna, said Matthew Tate. Director of West Coast Business Development, the community in Fortuna is buzzing with opportunity for development. Our team looks forward to analyzing the market in Fortuna and advocating on its behalf. And we're really excited to continue to expand partnerships. I think with COVID, we have a great opportunity as we reopen to think, rethink about our partnerships and. And how we work. And we kind of did an example of that when we transferred our COVID money to Eureka and Arcata. It's like a new idea, a new way of thinking. So that's why the chamber went with this. So why are you paying for this market analysis? Their market analysis is really detailed. It's more detailed than a full-time staff employee at the city could do on its own. So mobile data collection utilizes cellphone data to identify the home and work locations of customers that visit. The psychographic analysis defines the type of consumers in your market, breaking it down on their demographic. Characteristics, their consumer preferences, expenditures and their cultural ideals. Trade area identification, it shows where your shoppers are coming from. So are everyone, is everyone coming from Eureka? Are they coming from Riedel? Why are they coming to Fortuna? Consumer expenditures, what are your, what are people buying when they come to Fortuna? Gap analysis, this is great. So you can examine the market and target desirable businesses and avoid market oversaturation. We really want any business, all business, but we need the businesses to work in the appropriate locations. And not have all the businesses suffer if you have an oversaturation of businesses. And then the last one is business recruitment categories. And then they know, once they do the analysis, they know exactly what kind of businesses you should try to recruit. These are examples just of their membership subscriptions and their customized reports. It's something that I personally wouldn't have time to look through. And here is their demographic date, data sources of all the places where they collect their information. And then these are just some examples of recruited businesses from the past. And so after ninety days, they're going to present to the chamber their data collection and their analysis. They're going to offer suggestions on retail recruitment. And also throughout the year, they go to three retail real estate conferences in Florida. And then they would represent Fortuna at those conferences. A part of the Retail Strategy Contract is Renee and I have access to retail education, their webinars. And they have teaching for marketing in the community. And also what they have right now is a bunch of COVID resources. And they have information on the American Recovery Act and a bunch of great stuff. So we get free. I mean, it's part of the contract, but we get training while we're a part of this. So what Retail Strategy is going to look like in Fortuna? So, you know, we're talking about reopening in June. And we're talking about moving toward economic recovery. And when you're thinking of, you know, it's been a year and a half of strange time. That we should take this opportunity and evaluate our community assets and kind of think about what kind of story. Are we going to be sending out to the world while we recruit retailers? So it was really nice to think about all the great things of Fortuna. I really enjoyed taking pictures around town and looking at all the great projects. Broner Park, the rodeo grounds, Newburgh Park, the new Fortuna Bike Park. And a couple of years ago, the city got a Hobson Humboldt Grant for outdoor movies, which was awesome. And the rodeo is continuously being updated and that's just a great thing to have. We also have a historic downtown, a new open door community health center. We have the River Lodge Conference Center. We have the new Humboldt Senior Resource Center with adult day healthcare. And we also have the Jean Lucas Community Center with walking trails. Another community asset is our Fortuna Rodeo, which is celebrating one hundred years strong. And it gets to come back this year, July twelfth through the eighteenth, and that's super exciting. And these are some also, you know, Fortuna has great weather and has great festivals. And I know we've all been to these and, you know, Diana was already talking about the electric lighted parade. So it was just really nice to put them all together and, you know, auto expo is happening. And and so we're moving toward what we used to have. So. And this was just fun to put together. Some of these pictures were just from a few years ago. And just remembering how important these festivals are to our community. And so these are what opportunities that Retail Strategies could help us with is we have some vacancies that we should fill. And if we can't fill them, we should think about what's in our way and Retail Strategies can help us with that. So here's some examples from downtown vacancies, Main Street, Roterville Road and the Redwood Shopping Center. So something that we are kind of talking about and Diana is talking about is collaboration. And the chamber also got a quote, when they got first quote. For a different project that they offer Downtown Strategies. And currently this, the chamber, we need stakeholders in order to move forward with this. It is more expensive, but it's a very detailed strategic plan on how to develop your downtown. And your downtown for us, an example, could be the Riverwalk area. So Downtown Strategies, Retail Strategies is a long-term commitment. You know, retail recruitment takes a long time and it it falls through sometimes. And so the hope is you work with Retail Strategies and then if you're satisfied and you want to continue growing, you add on Downtown Strategies. So Downtown Strategies gives you a personalized strategic plan to move forward with your development of your downtown area. So an example of this is the city of Clear Lake, Clear Lake hired Retail Strategies in two thousand nineteen. And just March fourth, I believe, they approved Downtown Strategies with with the same firm. And these are just some examples that I've pulled from their their report. The report they received is over two hundred pages and it has tons of recommendations and they talk about a lot of different pieces. So one of the pieces is they evaluated the walkability of their downtown area. And anything that takes longer than twenty minutes is not walkable. And that's pretty exciting for that bird presentation we had just a few moments ago. That is directly assess, like assessing that walkable, walkable situation. It's dealing with that without adding more cars if it have you. So they were able to see this and then they were able to measure the walkability and make recommendations. Here's another example of data you can get from mobile data. They they chose Austin Park as an example. They were able. And then they could see that six point three percent of them are tourists. So now they can plan around that area based on that information. This is another great example, something I think would work in Fortuna, is filling the empty. Areas for lease with arts and you could work with the schools, you could work with the ink people, et cetera. But this is something that the the city made an amendment to their commercial building ordinance to allow this to happen. Because Fortuna is not alone. Cities across the nation have empty downtowns and they have to. Try harder to try to fill them and then to make them presentable. This was also exciting. So they found the locate, the ways in to their city. And then they've circled them and they're each kind of like micro districts or nodes. And then you make each of those micro districts distinct with signage, et cetera, design plans. So that when people are coming into your town, they they know where to go and they know what they're looking at. There's a, there's a complete plan. So they're gonna work on developing each of these, these micro districts. And that's something that could be, could be looked at in the next year, few years is if we would want to work on a. Long-term planning for the Riverwalk area, for example. And, you know, Fortuna is really lucky to have three entrances into the city right from the one oh one. So we have the twelfth street, we have Main Street and we have Kenmar. And Kenmar is very popular with the South and Main Street goes right into the the old historic downtown. So those are two really great opportunities that we might want to think about in the future. And these are, so Downtown Strategies and the others, there's lots of cities that are working with Retail Strategies and Downtown Strategies. And you can look them up online and see how they're feeling about it. But this is kind of like a theme of what you can do in-house to try to promote growth. So sign permit application, you know, reviewing that, is it easy to get a sign permit? Is it easy to get a business license? Do business owners know they can register for the National Register of Historic Places and get a tax credit? City of Eureka is making permanent outdoor dining. After COVID, it was really successful, and so they're making them nicer. We have nicer weather than Eureka. That might be something we'd want to look at. ADA improvements, you know, you guys are already on the electric vehicle charging, the wayfinding, and also taxi services, like getting people around town. So these are just general themes that a lot of people are thinking about while they're doing retail recruitment and Downtown Strategies. And it just sounds like a really exciting time to start thinking about this. I think what Diana was saying is you've got to focus, you've got to try. You know, you can't just wait for it to fall in your lap. And so I'm really excited to present to you guys Retail Strategies. And Matt is here. I have some notes about Matt. Okay, so Matt is the Director of West Coast Business Development for Retail Strategies. He's not located in the state, but I believe his brother went to Hsu. And so he knows a little bit about this area. He has been here before. And they will be making a boots-on-the-ground visit to Fortuna in the next few months. And we're hoping that maybe he can come and check Fortuna out during our rodeo. So with that, I'll pass it back over. I hope I didn't take too much time and let you guys be introduced to Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jen or Matt? Matt, do you just want to say a couple of words since you stuck with us all this time?
Yeah, I think one of the leads that was buried, I'm from Rockland, California. So I grew up, born and raised Rockland, California. If this was a normal night, I'd be watching the Giants game behind the monitor while you guys are, while I'm also watching the council session. So this is not abnormal for me. I'm a big Giants fan. It's great that they're the best team in baseball again. So one thing I did want to point out, and Jen did a great job giving an overview of what we do and who we are. There was one slide on trade shows and us representing you guys at the trade shows we go to. That was a specific call-out for the state of Florida. We actually go to over 22 trade shows a year from California to Florida and everywhere in between, including the big shows in Vegas, which is recon. That's in May of next year. There's also a December show for retail in Las Vegas. And then, of course, Monterey, LA, San Diego, they'll have shows once we get going again. We also are a platinum sponsor of a trade show called Retail Live, which has three locations, Orlando, Scottsdale, and Austin. And so we go to all of those on behalf of the communities we work with. But, you know, trade shows equate to about 30 days out of the year. The rest of the time, we're on the phone, we're emailing. You literally now, because of the risk or the chance that Renee and the Chamber took on us, you guys now have a full-blown retail recruitment firm representing Fortuna. So what we're going to do over the next 60 days is really get to know the market inside and out. A lot of the stuff that Diana talked about, we're going to have done for you guys. We have mobile analytics, so a GPS study. That, we don't sell cellphone data, anything like that. We use cellphone data to understand where are people coming from, where is their origination point? But we can tell retailers that Fortuna is not a city of just over 11,000 people. It's actually a trade area closer to 60,000 people, but we have to define that some way, and we use cellphone data to do that. So a lot of really cool, a lot of really nerdy stuff coming through. But essentially, what we want to do is we are the national experts. We will go and tell the story of Fortuna, but we're going to leverage Renee, and we're going to leverage Jen, and anybody, and Merritt, we bothered him quite a bit as well, to let you guys be the local experts. Tell us the story of Fortuna. What's important is when I go talk to retailers on your behalf, I'm not going to tell them about your splash pads and, you know, some of these things, but I'm going to tell them where they can make money in your community and why they need to be here and not just pass you guys up and go to Eureka or wherever else they'd be going. So that's what we're going to do. I've been to Fortuna, I've passed through it several times. I've stopped and flown a drone in and around there, dated a girl from Fortuna in high school. So I know the area pretty well, but I do currently live in Fort Worth. And once those prices drop down, I'll come find a house in Fortuna. So anyways, that's a little bit about me. I really appreciate everyone's time and here to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions specific to Matt before he leaves us? Or maybe he's listening to the rest of it. I don't know what your plans are, but it's getting late where you are. Any questions, comments? All right, well, we hope to be seeing you more and hearing you more, and maybe we can, you can hang out with a couple of council members on one of your trips, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll let Renee know, obviously, well before we come out. But what we like to do, I bring my commercial real estate team. We look at your market the way retailer will look at your market. We identify every property we like, whether it's dirt, grass, brownfield, greenfield, a vacant building, dilapidated building, or it's a building for higher and best use opportunity. We write down everything we like or don't like, and then we sit down with your team to say, okay, tell us what we couldn't see, what we couldn't find on Google, what we couldn't see with our own eyes. And at that point, that's when we like to pull in anyone from the community that wants to be the local experts to tell us a little bit more about what's going on. So it's a real collaborative effort, but at the end of the day, once we get the information from you, Renee can put her feet up on the desk like she likes to do and just kind of relax and do nothing, right? So that's our goal, is allow Renee to continue doing nothing.
All right, thank you, Matt.
That was a wonderful segue into the budget request from the Chamber.
That one up for me. I'm going to get you back.
Of course, if the city contributes, then Merritt can put his feet up and do nothing as well, right?
Absolutely. So with that, we'll turn it over to Renee. Renee, obviously, we want to be concise as we can. We're running late for a Fortuna council meeting. So thanks for being patient. And if you wanted to just give the council a recap and make any additional points on your request, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Long, city council members, and city staff and everybody watching at home for this opportunity. I will not take up a whole lot of time. I'm just going to show you a bunch of pictures because I gave you a pretty lengthy letter, which is attached to your agenda. So I'm not going to try and read through a six- or seven-page letter, whatever it was. So anyway, the Chamber, as you know, is a membership organization. And our main goal, a fundamental mission basically, is to enhance the economic growth through the promotion and marketing and support of our community civic interests and member businesses. And like most businesses, over the last 15 months, we've had to learn new ways to support our members, engage the community, promote the city, and all while in the midst of a pandemic and a shutdown. So one of the ways that we, oops, I'm going to make sure I'm on my right screen there. One of the ways that we did that is we initially created a blog right when the shutdown happened. So we've put in over 60-something blog posts. And it's a lot of information that we would share through our email newsletters, but we wanted to make it forward-facing in case people weren't signing up for our newsletter. So they can look and see, you know, this is just a screenshot of some of the topics. The other thing we did was we created a YouTube channel. Now, originally, it was going to be just to have special, like, Chamber chat videos. But then with the pandemic continuing on longer than we all could have imagined, we started hosting our weekly Chamber meetings online. So we have over 50, 52, I think, videos posted now. So anybody can go back and look at that. If they can't make our meeting live, here's an opportunity to go back and look at some of the more recent presentations have been with the Growers Alliance for the Fortuna Farmers Market, Ferndale Chamber. We had Bird Scooters on, Redwood Rural Health Center, Life Care Humboldt, and the Fortuna Adventist Community Services, who told us about the community garden. One of the other things we did in 2020 was we helped raise $2,100 for the Feed the ER program through the help of the partners that are here listed, as well as the McLean Foundation. They were really super instrumental in that. We also did a "Let's Pick Up Lunch" tab for our businesses. We had, I think, about a dozen, somewhere around $800. We were able to funnel back into our local restaurants. And this was at the beginning of the pandemic when everything was shut down. Fbit in the Chamber bought 100 face masks from Leftin Stitches when they started making masks. And the two of us then donated them around town, so that was a great collaboration. Again, these were the three seminars that we initially put on our YouTube channel. One was about the human resources and how COVID might affect employers, as well as our insurance agents and COVID claims and the PPP through our local lenders. So we utilized our industry leaders for the first of those three webinars that we did. So of course, promoting business is a big one. As part of the Choose Humboldt group, we pushed out a lot of member business content on Instagram and Facebook. We featured more than two dozen businesses during Small Business Appreciation Week. And we just launched a Fortuna Loyalty Card, which is a discount card that offers special promotions to cardholders. And while the program is still new, we have 20 businesses signed up already, and we're actively recruiting for more. We'd love to see as many Fortuna businesses in the program as possible. It's a one-stop card that has all the discounts in town, make it easy to go shop, support our local businesses. It's not just a Chamber member opportunity. Of course, Chamber members can do it for free. We do charge a small admin fee for non-Chamber members if they want to participate. So we encourage people to come on board if they want to join the program. This is just a snapshot of a couple of the discounts that we have. So you can save 10% at Taco Loco, you can save money and get a free lanyard and a decal at the Humboldt Connection, or save a dollar off of a bag of coffee at Jitter Bean. And it's really easy to show your card, so that's super fun. Building relationships is a cornerstone of the Chamber. Our ambassadors are an extension of the Chamber, and they volunteer their time to attend mixers, ribbon cuttings, and events. They also reach out when a new business opens, and they periodically visit our members with, you know, "Thank you for being a member" message. Being an ambassador is a great way to know what is happening at the Chamber and be involved in the community. And we're super fortunate to have such an amazing group of ambassadors with the Chamber. So like I said before, we've moved our weekly meetings to an online format. The next few meetings, we have Melissa Sanderson from Hobson Humboldt. She'll be our next presentation on the 14th, followed by Jesse Miles from the McKinleyville Chamber of Commerce, and then Lauren Corle from the newly-made Eau River Valley Community Center Foundation, which will be overseeing the Jean Lucas Community Center. Okay, anyway, so these are just some screenshots of the videos. Again, they're all on YouTube. Our meetings are always free and open to the public. You don't have to be a Chamber member to attend. As I mentioned in my letter, when we meet in person, we do offer a catered lunch. We pay our caterers a certain stipend to make it worthwhile for them. So we do run those meetings, you know, quote-unquote, at a loss. But we feel they're a valuable asset for the city, so we don't mind, you know, doing that. Again, that's an opportunity for the city to fund something. Also, we moved our virtual mixers online. This is our October mixer. We've had Hobson Humboldt, Open Door, the Depot Museum, US Bank, and the Edward Jones Financial Advisors in town. We had a lot of fun with creating new games like Shelter and Play Scavenger Hunts and trivia games. So what we've talked about a little bit with the Retail Strategies is our Tourism and Marketing Committee. We get, as Merritt had mentioned, we get the 10% of the transit occupancy tax that gets funneled into the TNM Committee. Now, the TNM Committee funds are kept separate from the Chamber funds. So the Chamber has a Board of Directors, and then the Measure W is its own separate bank account. We have our own separate budget. And the committee that's separate from my board, they approve all the expenses, and it's related to tourism, obviously, and marketing of Fortuna. COVID put a big damper on tourism plans. Last year, we had some ideas that we were kicking around, but then, of course, everything shut down. But we were able to put out a new billboard. So the one on the left is the original one that, oh, I'm not even sure how old that is, but I'm going to guess probably 25, 30 years old. It was looking a little ragged. So we, after getting several proposals from different designers, we chose the Humboldt Connection, the committee, I should say, went with the Humboldt Connection. And so this was the first of two banner billboards. The second one on the left is the River Lodge billboard. And what you don't see right now is about 18 feet of blackberry bramble that will have to be mowed before we can get in there and paint. So the design on the right is still a draft, but I just wanted to show you kind of the direction that the committee is heading with the addition of an eagle and a fish to kind of give some 3D elements to it. Also, the TNM Committee put on a, what we called the Fall into Fortuna Scavenger Hunt. I set up missions that allowed our teams to stay within their family unit during a point when we had a very restrictive tier. And they could do things, their missions were, so for instance, up here, if you guys can see my cursor, you had to imitate somebody that was in the Greens Pharmacy mural. You had to find public art and pose for it. You had to find something that was fall-themed at a business or go into Crystal Lewis's office and get her brochure. So some limited contact, but it was just so great. And I have to say, Jenica Shamp and her family are fantastic scavenger hunters, and they had some of the best submissions. This lovely group up in the top left are our winners, the Bailey family. They won the $500 grand prize, and it was a variety of gift certificates at different businesses in town. So again, another way to keep money locally, which was awesome. And then, of course, you may have seen some otters popping up. Two years ago, the Humboldt Lodging Alliance and the Tourism and Marketing Committee, we became a patron of an otter. And this is Poppy Rose McOtter. She was painted by James Rose in Ferndale. Of course, yes, that is Cameron and I having a selfie after she got installed. She's currently in the fireside room at the River Lodge where she will sit. There will be this poster. You can scan if you spot an otter. There's going to be a whole otter art trail from Mendocino County all the way up to Del Norte. So that'll be coming in the next few weeks, and that is through HSHU, so we're excited. And Poppy will be a permanent resident at the River Lodge after this. And her future home will be determined once we secure her, probably in some Plexiglas against vandalism. Also, public art. We've been able to add some more public art into town. On the right is a pole outside Landmark Realty. Jeremy Stanfield's grandmother, he can correct me if I'm wrong, grandmother, he's nodding, painted that beautiful picture, and Lotus Mountain was able to vinyl wrap the pole with it. Of course, we have one outside the Chamber office, and then Penny Frujot painted the elementary school or is it the middle school, grammar school? And that one is at Strong Street. So we absorbed the Art and Culture Committee, which was a subcommittee of the Chamber. We absorbed that into the TNM Committee because public art is one of the economic drivers of tourism, so it just made sense. And then it was just, you know, one less committee I had to worry about. One of the other projects that we're hoping, waiting for approval by the city, is these maps that we had put together with Lotus Mountain. It is a point of interest. I know it's a little hard to see probably on your small screens, but each of the icons represents either a shopping location, a point of interest, a government building, or an eatery. Did I say restaurant already? You get it, lodging, restaurant, shopping, public buildings. And so, and each QR code, which is this little symbol up here, will be scannable with your cellphone, and that will take you to a webpage on our website that will give you more information. So if you want to know what all of these hotels are, you just click this, and you'll get a listing of all the hotels. So we're excited about that. Hopefully, we can get those installed. And the other big project that we're working on is the 2021 Visitor and Relocation Guide. And we've expanded this to 32 pages, and these are just some of the things that we've added. I will let you guys read them in the interest of time. But so we've added an art map, and we've got a special section on doing business in Fortuna that we got from Fbit. So thank you for that, as well. and we've got a special section on doing business in Fortuna that we got from Fbit. So thank you for that, as well as local contacts and some other things to make it a little bit more robust than just a visitor's guide. And then of course, the big project for tourism and marketing is Retail Strategies, which I won't spend a whole lot of time on because Jen did such a great job. I will say on a personal note that, you know, I started looking for this several months ago, back in January. I did vet another company that I was not happy with. I'll say that nicely. And then Matt and I just kind of fell into a groove and shortly after we started working together, I'm gonna cry, I lost my dog and he, sorry, I can't believe I'm doing this. He sent a condolence card and I just thought it was really sweet. And it told me everything I needed to know about his integrity. So thank you for that. Sorry, I digress. So Leadership Fortuna, Building Leaders. This program would have been in its ninth year, but COVID, of course, had other plans. We are looking forward to bringing that back. It's a sixteen-week program. We may change it a little bit, but it's a great way to see behind the scenes with what's happening in Fortuna, get access to your local leaders, community stakeholders, movers and shakers, et cetera. Also, what got interrupted was our 2019 Youth Ambassador Program. We literally launched it, I think, at the Redwood Capital Mixer and then COVID hit two months later. So unfortunately, our youth ambassadors didn't get much of a chance to hang out. Community collaboration also is really important to us because ultimately we all want what's best for Fortuna. So one of the ways that we do that is through our quarterly newsletter. That's with the North Coast Journal. They sell the ads, the covers, production and postage. So it's really just sweat equity on my part, writing it. It's a labor of love. I really enjoy it. I love it. And it's a way to just kind of have a paper record for Fortuna. Also, we do the State of the City with the, with the City of Fortuna. You guys come in once a year and we do this big spread at the River Lodge. Last year and this year, we partnered with the Fortuna Union High School District to bring you Operation Celebrate. We had two hundred fifty-four graduating seniors this year and twenty-five businesses, as you can see on the right, printed out letter or printed out the portraits of the students and decorated their windows. I can tell you the winner, the first place winner, as voted on by the public, was Double D, followed by Greens Pharmacy and third place was JH and Company. They will be getting a thank you prize from the Chamber for being so gracious and decorating. Another community event that we did was a drive-through Santa event at Umquah Bank. We had a bunch of kids show up. They could talk through the drive-through teller window and see Santa and a bunch of them brought letters and it was really, it was really sweet. So that was super fun. And as Sue Long knows, we coordinated with Holiday Dazzle. That was super fun. And I'm hoping I can convince her to do it again this year. And I'll make her get all the prize money because she's really good at that. And it was great. We had, gosh, I think six thousand online votes, some ridiculous amount. People just loved it. And we ended up getting so much money that we created two Mayor's Choice Awards with some leftover money. So again, just something to bring some cheer to Fortuna. Most recently, we teamed up with the Fortuna Skate Park. We decided to team up with another nonprofit who had been affected with their fundraising the same way that the Chamber had. And the skate park, by coincidence, reached out to me around the same time I was having this idea. And it just was a natural fit and it worked out really well. And we were able to cut them a check for five thousand dollars. And we had a bunch of sponsors and really great raffle prizes. So thank you to everybody who came out and supported us. Delicious dinner by Doris and daughter and fantastic cupcakes from Fresh on Main Street. The Chamber also is a big supporter of all of our other annual events, whether it's helping promote them, working the event or sitting on the committee. So obviously, we've got the rodeo, we've got Apple Harvest, Grave Matters and Untimely Departures, Auto Expo, Trunk or Treat with my aforementioned dog and Hobson Humboldt. So we, you know, even though we aren't specifically sponsoring these events, we do in other ways and, and keep them going through whatever means that, that we can. And so in closing, a couple of upcoming events that we have is our first in-person mixer at Wild Souls Ranch. That will be next Wednesday from five-thirty to seven-thirty and that is Merle the Donkey on the right-hand side. And that's where you will find me for most of the mixer. I will be petting that cutie patootie. And then of course, Chili Cook-Off. Normally, we have a big party in downtown and we shut off the streets and about twenty-five hundred people show up and they eat chili. Well, with COVID and June fifteenth, we didn't know what was going to happen and these kind of events you can't organize on a dime. So I decided to do a restaurant edition. So each restaurant that you can see on the right-hand side, these are, are, are participating businesses. At this point, we've got these folks signed up. And yes, you are reading that right. Shots and Starbucks will be coming up with a chili-themed drink of some kind, not actual chili, but chili flavored. And then we'll have a passport that will get printed in the rodeo guide. You take your passport into the restaurant, you eat the item. They stamp it. You can write in who your favorite dishes and then the winner, as chosen by the public, will get a super nifty trophy and a hundred and fifty bucks. All of the stamps will earn you one entry into a random drawing for fifty dollars. All of that money is provided by Redwood Capital Bank. They are the sponsor of this. So thank you, Bob Judevine and Redwood Capital Bank for that. And then finally, the US Capitol Tree is being picked from Six Rivers National Forest, which is super exciting because we have to wait every ten years for them to come back to California. And then this time it was our forest, which is fantastic. And so I and Merritt and Raquel from the CCCs and Lauren from the McLean Foundation, we've all kind of got together. I got Kathy at Fortuna Fabrics wants to do tree skirt making parties. We're going to have a whistle stop event at the River Lodge at the end of October. That's probably the only place that will fit the eighty-foot or hundred-foot truck that's coming. But we'll have more little, little mini events, ornament making, tree skirt making. We want to get the community involved. We want to reach out to our Hispanic community. We want to reach out to our tribal community and get them involved. And there'll be an opportunity to sign the big banner at the day of the event for the whistle stop. So that's, that's it for me. So I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay, questions for Renee? I don't know, you guys, are you sleeping because we went so long tonight or what? But how come I'm the only one who has all the questions? So if you guys aren't going to ask them, I'll ask mine and then you guys can chime in. So first off, I want to preface this by saying how much we need our Chamber. So my questions to you are personal. They are, our job as a council is to budget the city's money, our taxpayers' money. And we are first and fully responsible for the City of Fortuna budget. So my questions, because now you are coming and asking for City of Fortuna money, are the loss of income from your Monday lunch meetings. You said in your letter was about three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I don't know that as a city, we should be responsible for helping your budget in ways when you're doing things that are losing money. And I don't know if you can take a look at that, if it can be revamped. I don't know what that looks like. I'm just throwing that out there because that concerns me. And my question, that maybe you can answer right now before I ask you more questions, is how many people are attending the Chamber lunches, but not lunches, meetings on Mondays virtually versus when they came in person? Do you know that?
Yes. So we average depending on who the speaker is. So if we have an engaging speaker like Merritt Perry, we can get, you know, thirty-five people on a Zoom call or forty. He'll probably correct me if I, if I didn't get his stats correct. But today we had twelve. So we averaged between twelve and fifteen maybe. And in-person events were probably pretty similar, where we'd have twenty-two to thirty-two regularly attending. The problem is that because we have, in order to get a caterer to come and do the catered lunches, we have to pay for a minimum. And not everybody comes and eats lunch. They bring their own. They have dietary issues. They're not hungry, whatever the case may be, but we still have to pay for those twenty meals. Now, the choice, we could make the choice to not offer a catered meal, but then I think there would be some kind of anarchy. So I'm gonna, I'm going to say we'll keep adding, we'll just keep offering meals and hope more people will start eating. How about that?
Alright, so that was my one thing. Then in your letter, you also mentioned that membership dues are down. And again, the job of the Chamber to get your membership up, to re, you know, talk people into joining, to make your case as to what the Chamber offers them. And it's not really up to the city, and this is all just my opinion, step in and give you money if your membership is down. That is on you guys. That is what your responsibilities are. That's what you guys are supposed to be doing. And then my other question or comment, whatever, you can jump in if you want to say something, Renee. The loss of revenue from the annual dinner was one of your points, yet you've partnered with the skate park and you gave them five thousand dollars. Again, you gave away money that could have went into your funding. And so I am a one hundred percent supporter of the skate park, but the skate park is so far down the road right now that five thousand dollars really didn't change anything per se, but it could have changed things for you because you're coming to the city and asking for money. And I don't know how much the Chili Cook-Off normally brings in. I don't know if that's like a really big thing for you guys or if it's just a little boost. And then my other thing is that we don't know what your budget is. We don't know what you spend your money on. We have never seen your budget. So it's hard for me to take money from the city's budget to give to you when I don't know what that budget looks like. This marketing and recruitment thing, you're asking the city after the fact to pitch in. And I don't know what prevented you from asking the city before the fact.
Well, Merritt, I'm, I'm considering Merritt and it was included in that conversation. So yeah, I mean, this all kind of came up really fast. We needed to sign with them quickly because a neighboring city was making overtures to hire them. And we didn't want to be shut out of being able to have them perform stuff for us because when we're so close to another city, they're not going to work for both cities because it's kind of a conflict, like who are we going to give this one retail store to or whatever? So that kind of pushed us into getting a contract signed faster than we would have liked. So we did have to put the cart in front of the horse in this instance, but it was extenuating circumstances.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how does this new marketing attracting retail businesses? You, as the Chamber, is talking about doing this, but then in Diana's presentation, we also heard that she wants to do that. So what does this look like? Are you guys, and you might not even know this answer, are you guys going to collaborate between the two agencies? Or is this kind of this is our thing and that's your thing and we don't really care what your, over there stand up our? I don't want.
No, no, I fully intended. That's why we're, we're coming here. We want as many stakeholders that want to contribute to be a part of it. We won't say no to any data or, or anybody with input. I just went on my own and researched this because I know the city is short-staffed. They have a short, you know, a tight budget. I know Diana's stretched. It's not in my wheelhouse. So I wasn't going to try and attempt to figure out how to find mobile data or how to reach out to a big retailer to see if they wanted to come here, which I also want to mention that, that it isn't all just the, the chain retails, retailers that they'll be looking at. If we know somebody locally that is looking to open a business or open a secondary location in town, they can certainly do the outreach for us. They, they, they want that feedback from us. And that may not be everything that I know. Diana may have information, Merritt might have information, our realtors, Jeremy Stanfield, whomever may have information on properties coming up and that, that might be a good fit. So yeah, it's definitely going to be a collaboration. I just moved quickly because I can. And I don't have, you know, the city red tape. And I have a committee and we had money with the Measure W funds that we didn't spend last year because, you know, tourism was on hold. So I feel like, you know, now, and with all these other things that are happening in the area with the US Capitol Tree, the Otter Art, I think with the Rodeo Hundred Years, all those things that are happening positions Fortuna in a really great place. And can, and we have so many assets and we need somebody to tell that story.
Just want to say one thing really quick. This is the first presentation that we've heard about this. This is really exciting. And a lot of my board members are on here. So we'll totally put it on our next board agenda and talk about it and, and try to seek funding to help support. This is, this is what we do. So it's exciting and it's exciting to, you know, to see how passionate the Chamber is about this and Matt and, and all the work that they put into it and Merritt and Jen. And of course, we want to be a community partner. So we'll figure out ways to connect with the Chamber and support the Chamber there too. But when it's all said and done, we, as a city and the Chamber and the bid, you know, we really need to work together and this seems like a really cool collaboration partnership. And I think Redwood Village, you know, their, their shopping centers, I can like just visualize all of this. This is really exciting. So, you know, I would encourage and ask that the city support this in any way you can. And of course, it's not my money. So I'd like to ask you to spend yours.
Well, it's not really mine either.
I would step in really quickly.
If I could just say one thing.
Any people talking? Merritt?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I did look at this with Renee and, and saw, you know, and helped her when we were getting the proposal for Retail Strategies. So she really did pick it up and, you know, I supported that. And I wouldn't have been able to take that up and kind of work on a scope and, and get this going. And she really did that. And we did send the scope of work over to Fbit and share that with them. So even though this is the first presentation, they've had the scope of work and it's been available. And so they, they understand also that this opportunity has been out there to be able to work together and partner on this as well.
And Mayor Long, if I will, just quickly, not only am I the president of Fbit, but I'm also a Fortuna business owner and a Chamber member. So, you know, we all wear many hats in this small town. I would say as a Chamber member who pays dues, I think that Renee jumping on an opportunity like this was really great. And I think that working together and collaborating as the wonderful unit that we can be, I fully support it. As a member, as a paying dues member of the Chamber. Thank you, Renee, for all your.
Thank you. Any other council members have comments or questions? Well, we've got them all capped up here.
I do, yes. I think it's extremely important for the, for the city to just encourage the Chamber and to do what we can monetarily for the Chamber and especially with the retail recovery that we're going to be seeing in the, in, in this next fiscal year coming up. I, I think that we just need to move forward. I'm sure we can get the Chamber budget in front of us at some point down the road. We can do some of these things that Sue was talking about. You know, some of these issues that have come up. But for this next, next fiscal year, I think it is important to support the Chamber. And I, I'm just not sure, maybe a question to Merritt would be, if we have a motion with that regard, do we do that here or wait until we get to the budget?
This is a discussion item, so it would be part of the budget. And really, I just wanted the opportunity for Renee to be able to kind of present the request and answer questions. And I know it's already been a long meeting, but the budget item is where that would come in.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I, I do have a couple of board members that are on. I don't know if there's a cha, chance for a public comment, if they can keep it to a minute or less.
So we've heard from Eric, who else is on here? Oh, Gary. Go ahead, Gary.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Mayor Long. Hi, Merritt. Renee, great job with putting that together. So I, I, I know Renee didn't answer a couple of those questions around, you know, the cost loss and the, the, the ones that are not what you would call a revenue driver. But when, because we've asked that question as well as board members over the last two years, prior to COVID, during COVID, how does that continue? And, and similar to the, the Monday. And, and similar to the, the Monday lunches at the Monday Club, um, and also if you think about even like State of the City, that isn't a revenue generator for us. We don't look at it for that, that is something that we look at. How do we as the chamber get that weekly information? Be it a merit giving a, uh, update to the, about what's going on in the city. Be it a, uh, partner from HSU, be it, you know, any number of one of those speakers. So if we can run that lunch program throughout the year and have it be, you know, within, you know, a couple thousand dollars of cash neutral, we look at that as something of giving to the city and giving to the business people. And there has been a ton, especially this last year, of training that has gone on in those lunches um, that people would, would not have really known about prior to, to that happening. And then same thing with the State of the City, you know, that's not a revenue generator for us, but it's our way to pull the city together. Prior to COVID, we had our best ever. Um, I think we had like six head tables, I mean, it was crazy. So, and we've done a really, um, so some of those things, you know, i- it is like, why are we losing money on it? Some of those are, are not meant to make money, um, but we look at the greater good that they do do. Um, and I, I really do appreciate the, the amount of work that Renee and the chamber and the, and subcommittees and my, my fellow board members have done this year um, around how do you just keep businesses surviving? And I, I think that's one of the things that, I, I mean, nowhere in any of our guidebooks or our job descriptions or, you know, sue yours or merits was COVID. Okay? That did not, that was not a line item in our job descriptions. But we jumped in and we continued to support and educate throughout the year in a really, really quality way to augment not only what the city was doing, but in some cases, what wasn't doing. You know, and so that way we can fill the vacuum as a partner. Um, and that's why when we at our most recent board meeting had the conversation around this and we felt it was important to say, you know, that we should have the funds restored um, that we've historically been doing. Um, because I think we're also incredibly fiscally prudent with them um, of how they get spent and the ROI I think is really quite apparent. So I appreciate the um, good words from the other council members around looking at the budget. I appreciate your time on that and um, really good job, Renee. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Gary. So my question would be to all of you for something to think about. Three-five-hundred dollars a year, is it up to the remaining citizens of Fortuna to supplement your budget so that you can have those lunches? Because that's basically what's happening. And I absolutely agree that they are very informative, that we get a lot of information out to our business owners. But the question still remains, should the rest of the citizens of Fortuna supplement programs provided by you guys that aren't making money? I don't know the answer, I'm just, that's, that's what's happening if we are giving money to a chamber who is not making money or is losing money on things and then coming to the city and asking them to kick in dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I won't speak for the full board, but I do think it is something we can look at. Um, cause I've even asked that question, I mean, like, how do we make money out of this or at least break even? Um, you know, we can look at, um, you know, we have sponsorships, there's other things we can do around that. I think the funds that we're looking for are really more um, holistic in the rest of the budget as well and the other, the outreach and things that are happening, similar to what's going on with Matt, what Renee are doing.
And I agree, but if you take the five thousand that you gave the skate park and you take the thirty-five-hundred that you lost on lunches, that's eighty-five-hundred dollars, you're asking us for thirteen, I mean, that's a big part of that. And plus, we have never seen a budget, we do not know how you are spending your money other than the thing we can kind of see, you know, and some of the things that Renee presented. But even still, we don't know how much those things actually cost. We don't know, it's just hard to justify. And I realize we did it in the past and it's one of those things, just because we've always done it that way, doesn't mean it was the right way. And we have never looked at a budget for the chamber and said, yeah, here's, you know, I really think they need the money. And we are a partnership, I agree, with the city and the chamber and FBIT and all of our organizations with Rotary and, you know, all of our service groups, everybody pitches in, everybody's part of our community and everybody's part of what makes it successful. But for me, with the city budget, I have to be sure that I'm doing the right thing. And so that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, that makes very good sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary.
Sue, just a comment.
Yeah, Mike?
Um, in years past, the chamber has wrestled with the lunchtime um, meet, lunch meetings. Um, there have been times when chamber has stopped the lunches because it hasn't been profitable to continue those. Um, so it goes back and forth. And yeah, just because it's been done, you know, with having lunches um, for so long now, it doesn't mean that we have to have lunches for the in-person meetings. Well, if that's an uh, issue that um, you know, is, is in the way here, then um, I'm sure Renee is, would be willing to, you know, revisit that issue and, and eliminate lunches unless or until it becomes profitable.
Well, and necessarily, I'm, I'm buying these things tonight. I'm just throwing out my concerns because obviously they haven't heard that. And so they're not gonna have an answer right now and it's not expected. But, yes. Um, Melissa, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I didn't know how to virtually raise it, I forgot, but um, hi, uh, thanks for letting me talk. Um, I'm on the chamber board and I just wanted to say, to bank off of what Gary said, um, I was tossed on the chamber board because Seth McGrath needed to like fill a spot and he's like, throw Melissa on there. So I went into the, all this like, not really knowing anything other than what I've experienced with HOPs. And I can't tell you how professional the board is. And also the fact that these Monday lunches, they don't really have to be lunches. And if you're really concerned about them not making money or making money, um, the request for this was for, to help the chamber for the future. And if these lunches, Monday's lunch today, as a new business owner, I had no freaking clue that if you have more than five employees, you need to have some sort of retirement plan for your employees. And if you don't, you're gonna get fined. And I had no freaking clue until I went to the chamber lunch today. And I didn't want to eat while on my virtual lunch and I probably wouldn't eat when I was actually there. But I got the knowledge and then I bounced out. So um, I appreciate everything and I think it's a real asset for our town. And compared to a lot of the other um, cities, um, I think that we've really got it going on and we need to really support it and that's about it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Is that all the board members? I think that's everybody, right? Okay, Renee's nodding, okay. Tammy, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, I do. Um, I can certainly understand membership being down, especially when so many businesses um, were hurting this last year and it was an easy cut for them. So that I have no questions about and I'm sure that will pick back up. But where I'm looking at is because the city's budget was so tight last year, we took a big chunk out of the chambers. We didn't end up as bad off as we thought we were gonna end up. I just feel that we should put back what we have normally been contributing to the chamber. Um, she did, or the chamber did a lot during COVID to help bring people together to um, do something, those, those virtual chamber mixers were something fun that you could do for your house, you know, from your house, and I actually won one of them. But, right, it was, it was, I think, I, I'm really happy to see in these presentations how much, I'm, I love my city and I love the enthusiasm that the chamber and the bid have for the city also. And I just would strongly like to support, you know, both of those. Uh, not at, given extra than what we have given in the past, but just giving back what we took away because our budget wasn't as bad as we thought it would. And I just think it would be, you know, the right thing to do is just to put it back. And I mean, I know that they've struggled with ways to try to raise money to make up for the money that they've lost. Um, and sometimes, you know, things are done for the community that don't make money, but it's, you know, it's community events and it's community stuff, I, that's just the way I feel. And I don't think, you know, I mean, when we get to the budget item, we can make an amendment there and add that back in, you know, right when we do this. But we'll discuss that when we get to the budget item, I don't know how the rest of the, the council feels.
Thank you. Clearly, my point when you said give them back what we took away, the fact that we have done that in the past doesn't necessarily make it right, just because we've always done it that way. That's what I was saying. And I don't know how that money has been spent because we've never seen a chamber budget and that really kind of bothers me. So anyone else from the council have a comment or a question?
Yeah, um.
Where are you, Mike? There you are.
I, yeah. I, I know at this moment in time, we're not gonna make a decision, but, and we get to the budget, we will. But I think that they have heard our questions and concerns. And I say ours because you're the mayor and kind of represent all of us and some of the things you said, a whole lot of sense. So anyways, I think they've heard, I think we can look forward to seeing a copy of a budget later on and that they will be looking, from what Gary said, to be more fiscally uh, aware. So as we look ahead to coming out of this, the community and the business community especially is going to need some help. And we're looking to um, bring more businesses in and uh, revenue generation. So I think this is an opportu- opportunity for us to, to participate in that and to help bring these, this company in, retail strategies and to come alongside the chamber. And, you know, we can hold the feet to the fire, so to speak. But I'm with Mike in that I think this is an opportunity and actually a time for us to help support the business community. And like Tammy said, um, we have an awesome staff who just because there's money in their budget, doesn't spend every penny of it. And we will probably end the year solvent again this year. That's just my, my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Becky Jaffe Minnie has her hand up.
Yep, real quick, um, I just wanted to thank you, Renee. Great presentation and thanks for all the great comments from the council and um, some of our board members. Um, as you well know, I have been on, on and off the chamber board many times and I have seen a lot of changes. And, you know, we were struggling when we lost our last CEO and when Renee came on, um, she just jumped right in. And this last year, I gotta tell you, I've never seen such a turnaround in the hard work that she put in and with the board's help, of course. But, you know, I think we've done so much great stuff for the city and have made some great partnerships with businesses, uh, service groups, uh, skate park, all the above. And I just think, you know, it's um, time, you know, to uh, reestablish that connection with the city in our budget and we'll, you know, obviously provide you a budget and answer any questions. But I just want to say that, you know, I think chamber and city have always had a great partnership. We just need to continue that and, and the bid too, we're all trying to work together. We're a small community and that's why we do some great things. So um, kudos to all of you for all the hard work and way to go, Renee, awesome.
Thank you, Becky. Any other council members? Erica, you've already talked a million times, do you have something new to say, my dear?
I know, but I just have to say one more time, okay? As a business owner, as a mom, as, you know, a person who has twenty-five to thirty years left to work and live and grow my retirement and put my children through college in this beautiful city, Mayor Sue Long, you know my bookkeeper's heart is with you and I completely hear what you are saying. But as we emerge from COVID, it's gotta be all hands on deck. And if, you know, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Trent, thank you for speaking up about the budget. And I just really think that, you know, we just all have to put in. So anything that the city can do, the chamber can do, FBIT can do, all of us as citizens and community members to build our city and to fortify our business is a benefit to all citizens. Because a robust business um, structure, community is a successful city and we know that.
All right, anybody else from the council have any comments?
I'll say that uh, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Trent that even if this is just something we've always done, I see this differently in that I feel like this is, this could be as much as a standalone ask as it would be a budget item. I think it's important to really put our money where our mouth is and invest in economic development at this time where we're coming out of COVID and we have an opportunity to see where the shortcomings are with retail strategies and then recruit those specialized businesses that could thrive here in Fortuna and then utilize their information and data to really hone in on services that everybody in the county needs and bring those dollars to Fortuna. So I, I love your fiscal responsibility and your asks, cause there's some of my asks too. So I want to hear some of those answers and I want to see that budget. But I think even as a standalone budget item, or a standalone item, even if it was an augment to the budget, I think that uh, this is something I could support because I want to see economic growth in Fortuna.
Yeah, I think we all do, there, there's not a question about that. And I really appreciate um, all the hard work by our chamber, our FBIT, all of our service groups. We are, that's, that's what makes us Fortuna. But I have to ask those hard questions and I don't want anyone to take them personally. So Renee and I had a blast doing the holiday dazzle and yes, I'm totally in for the next one and I will get you your money. So, thank you. All right, so if there's no more questions or comments, we'll close this discussion item and move on to our next um, business item. Are we good? Okay, seeing, seeing and hearing from no one else, we will move on to city council business. Um, our first item is to consider a reclassification of the full-time deputy city engineer position to city engineer. Merritt?
So the proposed budget ahead in tonight's schedule includes a change and we brought this as a separate items to make sure that the council had a full opportunity to consider it. This is a change in the existing, from, to the existing deputy city engineer position to the city engineer, new classification, classification in the same career path. There's a need for more engineering responsibilities to be taken on by our current deputy city engineer to allow for the city manager to have more time and responsibilities that are required for general administration, economic development and balanced participation in all city departments. Uh, our deputy city engineer has received his professional engineering license, has, has the years of experience necessary and has demonstrated his technical competency, communication and problem-solving skills over his employment with the city. So I'm confident of him being able to take the full responsibility of city engineer on it this time and starting in the new fiscal year without needing specific direction and oversight from, from me. A complete job description is included with the agenda packet that details the task for which you will be responsible. And there's a whole page of tasks and duties and some of the high, ones that I'd like to highlight include uh, development review, this is a really big one and taking a look at new developments coming to the city and thinking about reasonable ways that you can put, you can, you can include conditions for those. Um, management of capital projects, he's also, our, our deputy city engineer is also currently managing the city's uh, twenty million dollar plus wastewater project, floodplain administration and oversight of the new floodplain mapping, a design of minor civil projects such as some of the drainage uh, improvements that we've done in various spots throughout the city. And then responsibility for all the other tasks that are included in job description and responsibilities referenced in the municipal code. The personnel rules require that the reclassification um, states that positions and duties which have changed materially so as to necessitate reclassification, whether new or already, or, or already created, shall be allocated by the personnel officer to a more appropriate class after consultation with any recognized employee organization. This is an unrepresented position, so there's no employee organization that, that represents the position. And the personnel rules also um, state that the personnel officer, their designated or a personnel agency, a, a person employed for that purpose will prepare. state that the personnel officer, their designated or a personnel agency, a, a person employed for that purpose will prepare a pay plan. So the pay plan's also on the schedule tonight. It's included in the staff report. And essentially what this would amount to net is a ten percent increase. Although the top of the pay scale between the current position and the city engineer position is approximately ninety-four hundred, the current employee would see about a five percent increase based on the current personnel rules and regulations. So when employee goes to a more responsible position, the personnel rules say that they have to see a minimum of five percent. So the net impact to the budget as a result of this change in the coming year would be about a five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollar change. So really, I, you know, in, in summary, we're really fortunate to have a deputy city engineer who is qualified and willing to take on the level of responsibility. It's a huge responsibility to be the city engineer. Having a skilled person with, you know, that, that recognizes the, the breadth of the different types of projects and, and has a technical capability. It's really a rare find. And so I think it's important to be able to have someone advance her career here with the city. And I think this is an important step and it really will allow me to leverage my time. So on, on, onto other things that are, you know, really can't be done by the engineer. So with that, I'll hand it back to the council if you have any questions.
All right, let's open up public comment and to see if anyone calls in while the council asks their questions. Anyone from the council have any question for Merritt?
I have more of a comment. When, when we hired him, Merritt said, we found this young guy that I think has a good potential here in the city. I think he'll do a good job. Well, once again, Merritt made a good hire. He's proven himself, I think, over and over again, and I would strongly encourage moving him to city engineer.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to say that in my dealings with him, I've found him to have not only the technical skills, but the people skills and the skills needed to bring a team together and to accomplish the project. Which are those intangible things that you can't really go to school for, but he has those skills. And I think he would be great in this position. And it would also give Merritt time to work on some of that other projects he's wanting to do, business development, economic development, and such as that. So I think it's a win-win. So, thank you.
Well, in my line of work, I get to deal with Brendan quite often and he is very talented young man and I'm really glad that he is part of our city staff. So. Anyone from the public, Siana? I see no hands raised. Nope. Okay, all right. So with that, does anyone want to make a motion? We'll close the public comment.
I would make a motion.
I made a motion to approve the reclassification of the full-time deputy city engineer position to a full-time city engineer.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozzy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
So, good job, Merritt. These young people that we're bringing in, like Brendan and Aaron are really doing well by the city and so they're very appreciated.
I'd like to add chief to that list, too.
Is he young?
Well, yeah, kinda.
Younger than us, right? Okay.
The kids don't agree. They say I'm old.
All right. Our next item is to adopt fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen. Staff report, who is doing this one?
Our finance director, Aaron Felmy, will be providing our staff.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So tonight's staff is pleased to present a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. As the council is aware, the city council held two special budget workshops on the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. The first workshop was held on May sixth. And at this meeting, staff presented the proposed budget and reviewed general fund revenues and expenditures in depth with the city council. At the second workshop, which was held on May eleventh, staff focused on answering outstanding questions from the first workshop as well as closely reviewing the city's enterprise funds. And as a reminder, an enterprise fund is a self-supporting governmental fund that sells goods and services to the public for a fee. And so these types of enterprise funds consist of water fund, the wastewater fund, and the transit fund. And so in summary, the general fund and measure E fund have combined total operating uses of ten million, one hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Eighty-seven thousand, five hundred of those are for project rollovers. And that means that the projects were budgeted in last fiscal year's budget, but they have not been able to be completed as of yet. And that's for the storm drain infrastructure vulnerability assessment project and the limited impact development 12th Street project. Both of those are now scheduled to be completed in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. This is measure E, the city's three-quarter cent transaction and use tax. Monies will continue to fund two police officers, detectives, one community services officer, one part-time code compliance officer, and a parks and recreation director. New this year, measure E will also fund a full-time recreation program supervisor. And this was, position was added in an effort and opportunities for our youth. So we're excited about that. In addition to these positions, measure E monies will fund the K-9 program, our abatement program, storm drain maintenance projects, street maintenance projects, transit assistance for seniors, and potential parkland acquisition or improvements. And so the general fund and measure E fund have a combined total of ten million, sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars in operating revenues. And so when we take out that eighty-seven thousand, five hundred project rollovers, which will utilize prior year revenues, that leaves the general fund and measure E funds with a surplus position of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy. Additional information on the city's fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget can be found in attachment B, including the city manager's budget message. And as the council discussed in an earlier item, if the council wanted to add additional funding for the Chamber of Commerce, this item would be the item to do so. And you, we, I would just request that you add it to the end of the motion or as part of the motion with the amount that you would like to see go to the chamber, if any. And with that, I'll pass it back over to Mayor Long and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does anyone have any questions on the budget? Not, not discussing the chamber ask at this point. Any questions on the budget as it is? Okay, seeing none?
They don't have questions, but just a comment. I really appreciate the executive summary here, Aaron, that you did as well as the description page of the budget itself, which is a, just a larger executive summary. I think it goes on to three pages or thereabouts. But really describes the position of the city and the fiscal responsibilities that have been, that, that we've taken as well as the, the future twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal responsibilities that we're going to be looking at. So excellent job on the executive summaries, both of them.
And let's go ahead and open our public hearing so that if anyone is trying to get in or wants to raise their hand, they can do that while we're having our discussion. Any other comments before we talk about the chamber ask? Seeing none. So there are two asks for the chamber. They would like to have the thirteen thousand dollars that they have had in previous budgets reallocated as well as an additional ten thousand dollars towards the, what is it called? The marketing retail strategies. So what is your thoughts on that?
Just myself, I, I would be in favor of the thirteen thousand, which I think is what the city cut from them this current, current fiscal year. So I'd be in favor of reinstituting that.
Yeah, I think that's two thousand dollars over the surplus at this point.
Well, the surplus is twenty-one thousand something.
And their ask was twenty-three.
Well, if you count the, the money for the strategy, for the retail strategies, I'm just talking about the thirteen thousand that the city eliminated in twenty-one, in twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, I, I agree. But I was just pointing out that the whole ask would be two thousand dollars over.
Right.
And that's the only problem there. But I, I agree with thirteen.
Aaron, what's actually in our budget? Because I know we changed it from how we had it allocated before to give them more money towards use of the city facilities. How's it in there right now? I don't know what page that's on.
Yeah, last year we took away the thirteen thousand dollars, but we added three thousand dollars on top of the, the five thousand that was already in there for, for a total of eight thousand dollars for rental assistance. And so in the past, they would get thirteen thousand, just a, a check cut to them, and then five thousand for rental assistance. Last year they had eight thousand dollars for rental assistance and no check cut to them. So the net deficit for this last year was ten thousand dollars to the chamber.
So right now there's five in there.
This last, this current fiscal year that we're in, there's eight thousand dollars for rental assistance.
But it was normally thirteen total, including the rental assistance.
Eighteen thousand dollars total in the past.
That's what I want.
So the, the rental assistance, was that for the Monday Club or is that for the Fourteenth Street office?
That is for the, just the Monday Club and any, anytime they use the River Lodge for any types of events. The, the Chamber of Commerce building, I believe, is, there's like a one dollar lease or something like that for quite an extended period of time. So they don't, they don't pay rent on that building.
So for the Monday Club then, since they didn't have their, their Monday meetings, that's pretty much a wash.
Yeah, I would have to look back and see where they're currently at. But if they haven't been using it, then they obviously haven't been getting that rental assistance from the city for that particular chamber launches.
So it's normally eighteen thousand before we changed it in twenty-twenty and right now in the budget you have eight. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so we would need to give them back ten thousand to bring them up to what they were getting in, before twenty-twenty?
Correct.
Okay. So ten thousand brings them up to their normal budget from past years. And then they have an ask for an additional ten thousand for the retail strategies. So I want to make that clear in my mind. I'm repeating it for my benefit as much as your benefit.
That's correct, Mayor Long. That's the ask.
Okay. All right, thoughts, comments, questions?
Where did the thirteen thousand come in then?
The thirteen thousand dollars, and so we increased the rent and we reduced the direct subsidy. So.
Okay, so that's the three thousand.
Yeah, so Mayor Long's correct that we'd be increasing their budget by ten thousand. So if in, in net, and that's assuming that they, they paid full price for the facility rentals. But again, they didn't use the facilities this year.
So my understanding that that would waive the use of the, of the River Lodge for their annual dinner and their use of the Monday Club on their monthly, or their weekly meetings? Is that, why did it increase? Or did they used to pay for those things and we said, in lieu of money, we'll give you this?
Correct. I believe in the past, they paid for certain River Lodge events. And so this last year, we said, okay, we'll pick up more of those larger events and, and, and in lieu of giving you a check.
And then they didn't get to have any events?
They did have, they did have some, but they, they, they were limited.
Yeah, yeah. So can we still give them, and I don't know how they feel about this, and I don't know, is Renee still on here? I don't.
I don't see her.
Anymore. I don't know how they would feel about not being charged for using the city resources like River Lodge and all other things and having less cash. I don't know what that looks like for them.
I did speak to Renee and she said her preference would be to see the chamber funding reinstated for the chamber. You know, as a first priority, of course, they want to see both. And then the second priority would be to see the retail strategies effort funded in its entirety. And I don't, I don't think it matters to them if they see it as a, as a rental credit or if it's a, if it's a direct contribution. But I think their priority was that contribution to keep the, the chamber running and that cash contribution.
Okay, all right.
I kind of, oh, sorry. I, you know, like the idea of, of, you know, doing the contribution. And then their retail stat, strategy sounds like a really good project. I wouldn't even mind maybe funding half of what they're asking for on that. I think that could bring a lot into Fortuna.
At the risk of acting like I didn't read my packet, because I did, but I missed that part. I do appreciate that you brought up the fact that there's two asks, because I was just looking at the thirteen thousand as a singular ask. So I hope, I, I mean, I'll just go out there and die on that sword to admit that I didn't know that there was a twenty-three thousand dollar ask. I thought it was a thirteen thousand dollar ask. So I appreciate the clarity.
Well, Renee, we, as always, have the option of doing a budget amendment later if we wanted to do only one of them tonight and then get more information. Look at their budget, look at what maybe FBIT is gonna try to figure out to help out with the retail strategies. And just kind of see what that's looking like. So, I mean, it's up to us what we want to do. So what are you guys thinking?
I'm thinking, I like the idea of moving the rent contribution down back to five thousand dollars, putting the three thousand dollars back in cash to make it a thirteen thousand dollar cash contribution. And considering five thousand dollars towards the retail strategies. And see what FBIT and the chamber fucking fundraised for.
I do want to say one thing really quick regarding funding is at this point, the bid does not have funding set aside. We did not get a presentation and we didn't, but, but we hope to do a project similar after we found funding. So I, I don't want there to be the illusion that the bid has money potentially to set aside for this. That is not, and this is new, this is new to us. So we're excited to partner with them and we also are going to do something very similar. And so if we can, but that will all be grant funded pending. So I, I don't want the illusion to be that the bid has money to put towards this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Diana.
Does anyone have any comments while our public hearing is still open? I don't see anyone raising hands. So, okay, moving on. Somebody started to talk. Was it Mike? Lucy?
It, it was. Whenever you close a public hearing and after we have citizen, any comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
Sue, it's Gary Ogil. I'll make just a quick comment. I think however, you know, whether it comes in rent subsidy or cash, we would be, it's all support. So, I mean, however you slice it or dice it, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Gary.
And then we'll, we will at our next, obviously, we'll have a meeting next week. Two weeks from now, we'll, we can definitely, you know, work to get all those other questions answered if need be.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else from the public? Last chance before I close the public hearing. All right, I don't see anybody waving their hands frantically or raising them. All right, we'll close the public hearing and Mike Lozzy was ready to make a motion.
I am. I will move to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen. I am. I will move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen and approve the addition of thirteen thousand dollars uh, for the, uh, Fortuna Chamber budget as well as five thousand dollars for the retail strategies program. And to be read by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the City of Fortuna's annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Councilmember Johnson?
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting.
Okay.
I want to make clarity on the motion. Is this reducing the five thousand and giving thirteen in cash?
Yes.
My, my intent was the thirteen thousand cash plus five thousand for the strategies.
Okay, and, and reducing the, in lieu of rent from eight to five?
Yes, that's where the thirteen, yes.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Yeah. There's too many five using.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Okay, so we had Siana doing the vote.
We're clear that it's thirteen thousand in cash plus five thousand for the retail strategies con- contribution. And it's a reduction in the rent from eight thousand to five thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Did you want to read the resolution?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Was that read by title thing?
I read it, but I'll do it again, just for the role. I did, it's okay. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the City of Fortuna's annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you, guys. Moving on, we're still not done. Um, adopt fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, full and part-time pay rate schedules, Resolutions twenty twenty-one dash twenty and twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. And I believe we need separate motions for each of those when we get to that point.
That is correct. And this is my item this evening, a little bit of a lighter subject matter. Um, no, I'm just kidding. It's not lighter, but it is pretty, it is pretty straightforward. So I've put together a really brief PowerPoint to try to make it, um, easy to follow. Um, tonight, your council is considering the full and part-time fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two pay rate schedules. And they're being pro- proposed for your consideration. Uh, the Human Resources Department is responsible for preparing and maintaining the schedules based on class specification. It will consist of pay ranges and charts showing allocations for each class. Human Resources works directly with finance staff to ensure the amounts listed in the schedules are accurate and that they reflect any changes in rates due to negotiations or cost of living adjustments. And this is usually done annually or on an as-needed basis. The proposed changes to the current pay rate schedules, um, the full-time pay rate schedule includes reinstating the full-time status of the Recreation Program Supervisor, which was approved by your council on April nineteenth of this year. And the changes also include the reclassification of the Deputy City Engineer to City Engineer, which we discussed earlier. The only other changes are based on the cost of living adjustments outlined in the staff report per the current employee MOUs and Unrepresented Employee Resolution. There are no proposed changes at this time to the part-time schedule. However, with anticipation of minimum wage increasing by dollar in January of twenty twenty-two, staff plans to return to council at that time with an updated version of both schedules. So with that, very simply, staff is recommending that council approve the full and part-time pay rate schedules by adopting Resolutions twenty twenty-one dash twenty and twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. I do have the, um, pay rate schedules, the full and part-time attached to this PowerPoint. So if there's something specific that a council member wanted to see, I could pull it up.
Thank you, Siana. We'll open our public comment while the council, uh, ask any questions that they might have. Anyone have questions for Siana?
Yeah, I was just wondering, come January, where are we at with the, um, minimum wage progression?
Right, so January twenty twenty-two will bring a minimum wage, uh, increase of one dollar. So employers that have twenty-five or less employees will increase to fourteen dollars an hour and employers that have twenty-five or more employees will increase to fifteen dollars an hour in the state of California.
So that'll top us out then until they make another move.
It's going to create some compression as we've seen in the past. And I think we've had this discussion many times and, in that we're in our last uh, of the three years of our MOU with the, the bargaining units. You know, we're gonna go to the negotiations table again and i- it's definitely gonna come up as, as a, as a subject. But I think um, you'll see it come back to council kind of before we finalize negotiations because we'll have to take that next year's increase into consideration first. So we might see a tighter compression until we get to the final stage of negotiations. And I would be interested if Aaron had anything else to, to add to that. Or welcome him to add anything.
Yeah, just, just to answer, uh, Councilmember Johnson's question, this is the last scheduled year for minimum wage increases. It's gone from ten dollars to fifteen dollars over the last uh, six years or so. And I have not heard of, um, any future minimum wage increases to date, but um, I know they're always kind of talking about it. So, um, as of right now, the fifteen dollars is, uh, on January one, twenty twenty-two will be the final year of this, um, kind of six-year plan that they've had in place. And we'll see if they adopt anything in the future.
Siana, do you mind closing your screen so I can see everyone? Thank you. I can't see everybody.
No problem.
Um, I'm not seeing any hands from the public. I'm going to close public comment in a minute. Does anyone have any comments? All right, we'll close public comment and we'll go back to the council with any further questions. Or a motion?
Hold on. Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty and read by title only.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, Siana?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the full-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one and read by title only.
Second.
Thank you, Siana.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the part-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to item D. Adopt fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two capital improvement projects. Staff report, please.
Yes, very similar to the last item. This has already been reviewed by the Planning Commission and it was also reviewed by the City Council. So this is formally adopting the capital improvement program into the current year's budget. The program includes estimates for the current and future fiscal years projects necessary to maintain the city's infrastructure such as roads, sidewalks, streetlights, sewer, water main, pipes, manholes, parks, community centers, and other city buildings. As a reminder, the first year of the CIP is what is incorporated into the budget and the outer years, years two through five are not incorporating the budget, but they're more in there for future planning purposes and awareness of what the upcoming costs for future projects will be. The capital improvement program that's attached to the staff report also has a page that, for, for each project, which includes a description, the justification for the project, the funding source, as well as pictures and other, uh, information from staff. So with that, that concludes my staff report and I'd be happy to go into more detail if the council has any specific questions.
Okay, we'll have an open public comment. Uh, does council have any questions on the CIP or Mayor? Bringing that and seeing no hands up. We will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, five-year capital improvement program and appropriate funding and inclusion of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two projects into the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two overall budget.
Thank you.
I'm glad you got to say all that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm scrolling way down here to try to find where we are next.
The award of the contract for the well five.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the page. Okay. Uh, our next item, a word can authorize a word of construction contract for the replacement of well five to Cascade Drilling LP for two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Staff report?
So this is the project that we started on the design some time ago. And just to remind the council, the purpose of this project is we were starting to see reduced production from one of the wells that the city counts on, the, the city counts on for water production. And it's well number five. It's located at, at the corrosion control, control facility, which is essentially just a series of wells down on Eel River Drive where the city gets its water from. The re- the replacement of well five is currently in the fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget as well as, uh, some funding for next year's bu- budget. Some in the next fiscal year. It'll span both years. So there's a certain amount set aside in each one of those budgets. The task order for the design of the project was, was approved by the City Council on July seventeenth, twenty nineteen. And the, the bid package was released and publicly advertised on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. A non-mandatory bid walk was held on April twenty-seventh and the bid period ended and bids were opened on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two bids were received, one from Cascade Drilling in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and one from Maggiore Brothers Drilling for two hundred and fifty thousand. The low bid was from Cascade Drilling and they were determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And based on the favorable bids that we did receive for this project, the staff is recommending award. The overall construction budget for the project is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That also will be able to cover the fifteen thousand that's expected to be needed for engineering oversight from the design engineer and ten thousand dollars that city staff would contribute in the form of, uh, miscellaneous electrical and making of other pipe connections. So materials, possibly some very minor subcontractor work to get the new well connected to the rest of the facility. The contract amount for drilling the well, uh, includes a thirteen percent contingency and the total request for awards is two hundred and fifty thousand. And therefore, the total cost of the project can be completed for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And I just want to make the council aware, you can never, um, completely accurately project what the subsurface conditions are going to be and, and the depth of the well can change and the pricing in the bid could, could be affected if, you know, say for example, they have to go deeper. So although we think the project, we're pretty confident in the, the cost of the project, if there, there's, you could always encounter unknowns when you're drilling and it's possible the well might have to go deeper, which would necessitate more casing, other things like that. So, um, as with anything else, if, if costs do increase, we would come back to council if they were above the thirteen percent contingency. So I'd be happy answering your question. That concludes my staff report.
In the meantime, let's open public comment. Anyone have any questions for Mayor on this item? Oh, hands are up. So we will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I will move to award the replacement of well five at the Corrosion Control Facility Project, CIP ninety sixty-six. The Cascade Drilling LP in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and establish a maximum contract amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including a thirteen percent contingency and authorize city manager or his designee to execute the contract and other related documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right, our next item is authorize the city manager to award a professional services contract plan with partners for the city's local early action planning grant. Um, and since this grant is for the Mill District where I now own property, I'm turning this portion of this over to Tammy and then I'll be back later. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor Pro Tem, I, I think, I'd like Liz Shore to make the presentation for this item. She did prepare a PowerPoint, which I think would be helpful to the council. Um, and if, you know, we do have an option, I know it's been a, a long night, but if, I, Liz, I think it would be great if you could still do the PowerPoint to show them the maps. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that the Mill District does not just include the actual mill site owned by Towne Scotia Company. So I think it would probably be good to go through the PowerPoint that you have and, um, you know, again, be as concise as possible in the interest of time because it's already been a long meeting. So.
Yeah, um, sorry. Uh, no, I read, there are only three slides. I think they're, I think they'll be helpful as a refresher to what the grant application is about. Um, and, uh, yeah, it, it won't be that long. But, uh, I'm glad to be here and it's been a great council meeting. I was really excited about the F-Bid presentation, especially the, um, the downtown planning um, strategies that they talked about. It's really in line with what we're proposing here, you know, just identifying um, the assets of an area and, you know, what the needs are and what, you know, what it can really bring to the city and then just developing a strategy or, you know, a roadmap for that. So that was really great to hear. And this too would be, you know, will be a huge economic development, um, you know, project for the city as well as just creating, you know, an infill of a really important, um, part of the city's, um, geography. Um, so just as background, um, previously, the council authorized the middle of a LEAP planning grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of six-five thousand dollars. For activities that facilitate housing development. Um, that's HCD's goal. And they, they allow a wide range of projects as long as there is a link that can be demonstrated that shows, um, you know, housing will be facilitated. So they're really responding to, um, you know, all of the different hardships that cities have in creating housing in certain instances. And so in this case, um, uh, you know, we can see how the Mill District, the Mill Site is a bit of an obstruction and how developing it appropriately can facilitate housing. Um, so the grant was awarded by HCD. Um, and, um, so the city's LEAP grant will fund Mill District land use planning with the outcome being a specific plan, which is really just a type of planning document that allows, um, uh, policies to be, you know, focused on a certain area of the city. So it can be, you know, anything, any need that a city has or a jurisdiction has. Um, you know, whether they want to protect an area or help develop an area that has issues, um, specific plans can be really broad. And this one is kind of focused on just the Mill District, the Mill District and surrounding neighborhoods. It was some key, um, components, some key issues that we want to address. Um, as a refresher, I'm going to go over just a few slides. I'm going to share the screen now. So this is the city's general plan land use map, or this is just a, a portion of it, the Mill District. The Mill District is this, um, the bright pink or fuchsia color. Uh, Newburgh Road at the top, one-on-one freeway on the west, Kenmore at the bottom, and then there's the boundary of the Mill District itself. The planning area, um, includes, well, the Mill District does include a portion of, um, Spring Street. So there's the residential neighborhood there and then the residential neighborhood along, um, Newburgh Road. And then Fortuna Boulevard, um, is um, part of the planning area because of, um, you know, some overflow uses and also connectivity and infrastructure that we'll be looking at. Um, and then the zoning map, you can see the Mill District and the area that, the study area. Um, so the zoning is more specific. Um, the mill site itself has, it still has a heavy industrial, um, zoning. So just to go back here. Um, the Mill District itself, the general plan is broader in the, um, land uses that are identified in the general plan. So it includes, um, of a range of retail, retail uses, mixed use, um, resident. of a range of retail, retail uses, mixed use, um residential opponent, um and also it does recognize light industrial as, you know, the range of of land use types. And then the zoning um isn't really compatible with that because it's still heavy industrial. And so um normally when there's a general plan, land use designation change like that with such a drastic change, you would come in and focus, do some focus zoning, a rezoning. Um, but because of the issues with the site, it just has never been done. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had you know, the ability to um study the issues and consider a proper zoning and also um you know, take care of some of the issues that MP development. And in this case, you can see um how, you know, this residential area, it's kind of an older residential area, it's a residential multifamily. And there it still has um large parcels that are an acre or more along the perimeter and those have not been able to be developed because of infrastructure issues. Um, circulation, the roadway is unders- undersized and um storm drainage in particular, there's no, really no outlet. And um that's because the Mill Site is basically um a roadblock. So it's a higher elevation. Uh, it's been filled and, you know, kind of constructed on here and there with concrete and whatnot. And um really, there isn't any way to get infrastructure or um storm drainage out of um the Spring Street neighborhood. So um, that's one of the purposes of the specific plan is to um, you know, study that and see what the best um infrastructure plan would be that would help that neighborhood and would also um help development of all of the the Mill Site parcels. And it allows um roadway connections where appropriate that would um help some of the traffic out of the residential area and also um, traffic, you know, from Fortuna Boulevard into the Mill Site and, you know, whatever the future land use will be. So it's just going to improve overall um circulation. And the purpose of the specific plan is to, um, you know, give us time to study, study that, identify what the issues really are and what some potential solutions would be. And establish some standards. Uh, the Mill Site again is heavy industrial and the um specific plan would allow us through public, you know, public input, identifying the constraints and the assets, um allow consideration of appropriate zoning and um zoning standards. And this kind of just gives a, well, this is an aerial overview, that red outline is the Mill Site itself. And you can see the parcel lines, there are about twenty-five parcels, separate parcels in the Mill Site. And uh, you know, a lot of them are really um landlocked or isolated. And um this really demonstrates one of the you know, one of the purposes of the specific plan is to um create that infrastructure, the circulation that will allow access and um utility easements to all of the parcels. So, you know, none of the interior parcels will get isolated and um, you know, there is, the the utilities will be sized, um, you know, to capacity that will um adequately serve everybody. And that's going to, you know, facilitate overall development and um lower the cost to each of the parcels. So um no one gets stuck with all of the cost or, um, you know, funding will be identified or at least a funding plan and things like that. So um and then you can see where there are some connections to Fortuna Boulevard and into the um Spring Street Neighborhood that will you know, that will be obvious uh in uh circulation improvements to um, you know, to really increase the flow into the Mill Site. And that's just going to facilitate development. So that's it, that's the last slide. But um just to finish it up, we did send out uh five proposals to local planning consultants. We received one from Plan West Partners. And their proposal was responsive and showed their qualifications. It showed their full understanding of um the needs of the project and their ability to carry it out. They demonstrated their experience. And I think the, you know, they were up to the challenge of the the one challenge on this specific plan is we would like to see more funding for a specific plan. Um, so we're going to have to work really efficiently and get a lot done, um, you know, with kind of limited resources. Um, but they understand the project and they're working with us now on the SB two planning grant. So they really understand the city through that process. Um, so, you know, we're confident that we can get this done in a really efficient way. The other component that will need to be addressed at some point and Plan West did include it as an optional task and that is to um complete the environmental review under SEQA. Um, and then again, that will be an optional task under a a future task order. So um yeah, and based on the project timeline, the work will begin um as soon as the contract is executed. We've got that all, the contract ready to be signed after, you know, assuming it's awarded tonight. And grant closeout is September. The the um close, the invoice closeout is September thirtieth, twenty uh twenty-three. And with the um HCD's closeout at the end of December twenty twenty-three. So with that, I will turn it back to the council and answer any questions that you might have. You're muted, Tammy.
Tammy, you need to unmute.
Sorry. Um, I said, thank you, Liz. Um, I'd like to open the public comment to give them a chance to call in while the council is is asking their questions or of staff. So does council have any questions from staff?
I do.
Okay.
Liz, uh, at the end of the sixty-five thousand dollars, what's the, what do we get? Like, I know it's grant money, it's not necessarily our dollars, but are we looking for like a transparent overlay over the existing map to see where the roads and the gutters and the sidewalks and the s- the the storm drains are going to be? What, what's it going to look like and how's it going to help us develop this this parcel?
Yes, we would have a a graphic like that um for any area that is studied. Um, so that would include um infrastructure, uh roadway and um utilities. So there will be part of the part of the grant, um, there were the RFP. Or I'm sorry, their proposal includes some engineering considerations. So they have an engineering team um through GHD and they will be um having input on um, you know, infrastructure, roads and um, you know, what the constraints of the site are. So we'll have the constraints identified and um, you know, the existing conditions and then uh the needs of the, because of what those constraints are, what are the needs for development? Um, you know, to have that integrated overall um circulation and connection and um services provided to that area. Um, so, you know, there will be public, public workshops and planning commission and council meetings that will also kind of guide the process along the way as far as um, you know, zoning, zoning standards and what degree, if any, you know, beyond the existing zoning um standards um would be appropriate for the area. Um, we would be talking about design standards if, you know, there's, if there's um benefit from that in this particular area. Um, so yeah, there will be plans and um policies at the end for guiding development. Okay, it's, a specific plan is um a component of, it's like a layer under the general plan. It's just more specific and focused on an area. So the general plan, we have, you know, programs and policies and we have the larger goals. And so a specific plan will be that way as well. Um, and it might have some implementation measures such as, okay, now we're going to need to do a zoning amendment in order to achieve that um zoning designation that's that is selected.
Liz, can I jump in for a second, please?
Yeah.
So, Councilmember Stanfield, really what we're looking at is a, is, is, is a piece of work that will allow us to identify what the appropriate land use and zoning would be. Like Liz said, it's, it's like an overlay. It'll have a number of things related to you know, to the site, you know, constraints and and a lot of other things. But ultimately, our goal is to be able to rezone the site. Right now, you have a land use designation of mixed use, which is mixed with residential and commercial. And then we have a zoning of heavy industrial. And so right now, those two things don't line up very well. And we also have a number of the properties around the outside of the site designated for multifamily that without studying the infra- infrastructure, identifying some of the gaps and coming up with, for example, a circulation plan, an infrastructure plan and identifying those key barriers. Um, we, we, we would, it, there are really limitations to both housing development and ultimate development in the mill site. So we're taking advantage of the housing grant to be able to remove those barriers for housing and then also to pave the way for a rezone and general plan update of the mill site to make it more attractive to development.
Merit, um, Rob Holmland from Plan West, he's the pro- he'll be the project manager. He sent a message that he has an example that he can um, share of what that-
Yeah, if the council would like to see it, I don't know if they have more questions. It's been a long night, so I'd, I'd turn that back to the mayor if she wants an example. The, sorry, the mayor Protem.
Does any of the other council members have any questions?
I'm, I'm, I do.
Okay.
I'm really excited to see this project come about and move forward. Um, it's been a long time coming and I, and I'm glad to see this. Um, as I understand it though, this project will, what, help to support um, a- an eventual SEQA um project that we're going, we would have to um develop.
If we're going to, i- if, if we're to update the zoning and land use, we'd have to make sure to update the SEQA document too. So that's a step that would come later. Actually, the budget is not included in this scope, but it'll identify many of the issues that we'd have to analyze under SEQA. So, you know, we'll, we'll we're required to do that by the grant, but the sc- the scope that's currently in front of us from the consultant doesn't include the SEQA, but it includes a lot of the work to identify the issues related to SEQA. So ultimately, if we're going to rezone it, we need to make sure to address any potential environmental impacts or changes.
It just greases the skids toward the SEQA.
That's right.
Thank you.
So I guess to follow up on my previous question then, is this going to help conceptualize like the division of a larger part? With roadways and things like that, like? Yes, I'm struggling to understand what we're going to have tangible at the end of this. If, if Mr. Hom- Holmland has that example, maybe that would answer my question. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, if you want to see the example, in the scope of work, um, there's a number of things like op- opportunities for connections pedestrian facilities, connection to public transit, connectivity to, sorry, I think I'm in, let's see. And and maybe we, we could let, we could let Rob present that. I just, again, I'm trying to be respectful of the council's time. This is a long meeting and if you know, if you'd like to hear it, that's the option of the council. So it sounds like you'd like Rob to explain what some of the products are going to be coming from this study.
Does the council want to hear that information?
Yes. So here's Rob.
Uh, can you make it quick, please?
We can't hear you, Rob. There we go. Hey, Rob, we can't, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes.
All right, sorry, whenever I switch from Teams to Zoom, I have to switch my mics. Uh, so the city of Arcata recently did uh and Plan West uh did it on their behalf, a specific plan um for West End's uh area, so an industrial portion of town, very similar. Um, budget was uh, you know, fifty percent more than what you've got, but effectively this is what you're looking at. So you've got something that more or less identifies what the city envisions for the site uh and some guiding principles, you know, whether you want to create housing or jobs or both. And, you know, whether you want this to be cul-de-sacs or kind of a more of a grid system. Uh, then the analysis of existing conditions, then a description of the regulations, more or less, how the road systems would work in a couple of different scenarios. Then infrastructure scenarios and then uh the ultimate outcome. And so we can just rapidly flip through this. So this is more or less what you get. And as I show you these examples, this is the best form of pre-permitting that the city of Cali- or the state of California has. So when this is complete, it's really an excellent marketing tool for the city to share with private developers and say here is regulatorily what you're allowed to do on this site and a plan for how we will deal with the infrastructure that would be required to implement that vision. Uh, and so you can see some other communities include things like visual simulations before, on the left, after, on the right, and this is purely a visual simulation. We're currently doing this for the city of Arcata in another part of town. And that one's actually a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar project's uh budget, so substantially larger. Um, so we're doing these sorts of visual simulations, the Fortuna version, we won't be able to afford these simulations, but they're not completely necessary. You can more or less describe what the city envisions and then what kind of infrastructure is required to make this happen. So suppose these are residential units, we can calculate how much additional wastewater demand would be generated by the site. And then if that requires upgrade to the wastewater lines coming to the site and, you know, what would happen with the traffic, Caltrans is obviously going to be very interested uh in this project. And so overall, it's a form of pre-permitting by evaluating all the possibilities of a site, identifying what the city council wants to accomplish. Uh, and then the regulations that are required to change it and then the council can actually adopt those regulations. And then you can, you know, have the city manager go out and start finding developers that that will implement the city's vision.
Thank you. That was knowledgeable and quick. That answer your question, Jeremy? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Just another comment that this is another uh example pointing to the necessity of fixing the Kenmar one-on-one interchange and probably the twelfth street one-on-one interchange also. Because if we drive more traffic, we're going to have a greater bottleneck. So that's another good think, forward thinking on the merits. Thank you. One of the obstacles to development of the site is when developers come in, they want to understand how much it's going to cost to build something there. And and on this site, one of the biggest obstructions to development is traffic. And we've come a long way on some concepts for how to improve those interchanges in as low a cost manner as possible. But this will look, this report will look at other things, drainage and a, and a lot of the other information about the site. And our hope is to be able to not only be prepared to, you know, update the land use and zoning, but also to share what some of the site constraints are and be able to better estimate what the infrastructure needs will be for full development of the site.
Can I clarify, this is to do or to make plans for infrastructure and possibilities for this property, but we're not doing any zoning at this time with this, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So what happens then if uh this plan has been put together and a developer comes in and says, no, I don't want to do any of that. What will happen at the city level? What will happen? What's the next steps? Is, is it just a conditional use permit and we just make it work? Uh, because my answer is always yes, we can make it happen. But I want to know what the city has in plan for that.
Uh, Mayor Protem, if you'd like me to respond to the question, I don't know if we were done with public comment or where you're at right now.
Um, I, I opened public comment, so yes, she can answer that. And please, can you give her a quick answer to that?
Yeah, and and Rob may have a slightly different answer, but so, so through the mayor Protem and there will be stakeholder meetings and ideally we'd have participation from the property owner and any proposed developers of the property and what they'd like to see. And that'll be taken into consideration during the development of the project, the standards and in the work that's happening. So we're not going to do this in a bubble. It's, it's a very open and public process.
Mr. City Manager, would you like me to comment on that?
Please. Please.
There's nothing in state law that that defines what a specific plan is that would prevent you from envisioning really substantial development there. You could envision nine-story buildings, uh, with, you know, manufacturing on the ground floor and retailing. You can, you can envision something really big, uh, and then evaluate the infrastructure requirements would be. So it's hard to imagine, um, the plan falling short of what a developer would like to see. Um, usually specific plans are broad enough that, um, you know, we're not telling them exactly how to build it. We're just analyzing all of the various potentials and and coming up with what the implications would be. And, um, like the city manager indicated, uh, we don't just kinda make this up. It requires a lot of research and market analysis of what other sites have done and then what developers are typically looking for.
It's also my understanding, if I'm correct, that one of the reasons we're doing this is because there's so many different parcels there. We don't wanna landlock anybody. We wanna get the best infrastructure set up for this piece of property.
That's right. I mean, we've had development proposals that would come in on one, one parcel, for example, on the site. And if they don't take into consideration what the circulation would be on the entire site, you could have one, a development on one parcel really limiting what happens on the rest of the site. And so there's been a number of proposals and ideas that have come on board. And really, this will give the city a chance to say, here's what we think should be done on this property. Here's what we think's appropriate. Here's what we think a a distribution network will be. But it's not, you know, it's not final. A develop, the owner could come back, a developer could come back. They could have a ni- different, different ideas. But this is something that will allow the city to say, this is what we think would work good here. And this is the zoning and land use or the, you know, this is what the land use is that we think would be appropriate at the site. Because right now, there's been no movement, and this is intended to really give us movement on that site to get the city's opinion out there, since it was really kinda left in limbo in the, the last general plan update.
Thank you. Do we have any of the other public that would like to make a comment? Sienna, do you see any?
No, I don't.
Okay, then I guess we'll close public comment and, um, do we have a motion from the council?
I will say with great enthusiasm, I'm so excited to see this project moving forward. So whoever did this, um, grant application, thank you. Uh, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into professional services contract for the LEAP grant activities to Plan West Partners in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred and five dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes. Mayor Long, could you please come back?
It's easier to come back when you just have to hit little buttons and you have to walk out in the other room and then walk back into the room. So, thank you, Tammy. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to city managers' report. Merritt?
Yeah, before I go through the meeting schedule, I will, I would like to say that, uh, Liz Shory, our deputy director of community development, did put together the grant application. It was a collaboration of staff and something that we've been pushing for, but she did complete the application and has followed through on all the tasks to get us to where we are. So Liz deserves some credit for that.
Thank you, Liz.
Upcoming meeting dates, I'd like to cover those. Our next regular city council meeting is on June twenty-first. They'll can still continue for the time being to be through teleconference through Zoom. The next planning commission date, the June eighth meeting is canceled, but the next, um, planning commission meeting will be on June twenty-second at six o'clock PM. Next Tuesday, Septem- uh, excuse me, Tuesday, September twenty-first is the next Measure E meeting. And then the next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on July seventh. I just have a few items, uh, for the council is, I was really happy and councilmember Johnson or others may have more to say, but I'm glad to see that our events like rodeo auto expo and potentially even hops in Humboldt are considering to move forward. I think it's great and we're anxiously awaiting some more of the guidance and the change from the blueprint on June fifteenth. We're still continuing to track some of the Kalosha changes and working with our human resources director, how we can best implement those, protect the city and then adjust to the changing landscape. That's an ongoing effort. Uh, one of the things you will, we'll see, I don't think our finance director mentioned it, but there's some new estimates for what the American Rescue Act would be that seem to be about twenty-five percent higher than we anticipated. So I expect to be able to look at that with our finance director. Original estimate was about two point three, we ex- two point three million to come to the city. We expect it to be closer to two point nine at this point. So I'll be working with Aaron to bring that back to the council and think about how we incorporate that into the city budget and what types of projects that we do. We have a number of ideas, but haven't had sufficient time to study it and incorporate it into the budget that was approved tonight. And then one last thing is there's a fifty thousand dollar request that we made to the county. The county administers the Rona Community Recreation District would take, which takes a portion of property tax from, from property owners within the Rona Creek flood area. And so we've been very successful. I think if, if the council remembers, we were able to get, uh, I think around two hundred fifty thousand dollars when we were completing the project. That amount continues to build up every year. And so we're now, we're asking for fifty thousand to do some of the ongoing monitoring and maintenance. So the city's really doing the work that, uh, is necessary to manage that flood plain. And we have a majority of it within the city limits. And it's great that this mechanism that was we need and we're not having to use city general funds to take care of Rona Creek. So that's on the board of supervisors' agenda for tomorrow. I'll be reaching out to, um, Michelle Bushnell to let her know how important and grateful we are, uh, that that they're considering that and to see that money continuing to come to the city. That's all I have to report.
All right. Merritt, any questions for Merritt? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to future agenda items. Any thoughts? Hearing none, we will move on to council reports. Uh, Mike Johnson?
Okay, uh, I'll be brief as I can at this point. Um, biggest thing was the HCOG meetings, uh, this last, uh, couple of weeks ago. We, uh, authorized the regional surface transportation program awards for the various cities and, uh, public agencies, tribes, and allocated that funding. A couple of big things is the, uh, safety corridor project has had a lot of substantial work done. If you go through there, the acceleration, de-acceleration lanes have been completed. There is a new, uh, median barrier on the north end of going up through to Arcata. They're working on the Jacoby Cree- Creek Bridge. And there'll be, uh, I think there's half of that still needs to be done. The current portion that's complete is actually gonna be part of the detour. And if I remember hearing correctly, there'll be a, when they get the abutments done, there will be an interesting jack and move where part of the bridge deck will be moved over onto the new abutments for the new bridge deck that was just completed. An interesting project. Um, they will be moving, this project was moved forward and it's ready to go out to bid. So we'll be seeing that and we may be seeing some construction in what we would, we would call the not-too-distant future for the project, but a little further than we're used to here. Uh, also, the Last Chance Grade Project, uh, has been narrowed down to two alternatives from four. And believe it or not, there's actually been some letters of commendation from the local environmental groups and how it's being done. And it does not seem to have the, um, negative con- uh, connotation that the, um, Southern Project, uh, does through the South of Garberville there. I can't remember the standish, no, not Standish Hickey. But anyways, Richardson Grove, that's it, that project. And as for Merritt's little, uh, special event, yes, both, uh, rodeo and auto expo are enthusiastically moving forward, looking forward to having a modified event. Some, uh, not everything will be the same as it has in the past, but it will be substantially the same event with some modifications. And as with a lot of things, some of it may be, uh, looking for volunteers to help with things, especially in the, uh, auto expo. So that's it for me. I'll turn it over to Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And to the other Mike. You're muted, Mike.
There, I just, myself. I'll try and go really quickly here. Um, on the nineteenth of last month, we had a LAFCO meeting. We had a, um, presentation on the regional early action planning, um, housing planning activity. There is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in funds. And HCOG, uh, will get a, uh, presentation and they will be the ones to determine how to use those funds. So in the future, we'll hear from, um, Mike on those funds and the use of that. Um, we did have an annexation request from the Humboldt Community Services District on two parcels in the Mitchell Heights area. They amounted to about thirty-seven acres. The property owners were in agreement with that annexation and that went through. Uh, the LAFCO budget was brought up and we passed a budget which is the same as last year with the same proposed revenue and expenses. We did the Willow Creek Community Services District upgrade or update for the MSR SOI and the West Haven Community Services District as well. And, uh, we talked about the current future proposals, which will be one of a Arcata creeksite annexation. That'll be coming up in the, in the future. And then a workshop for commissioners, uh, about financial health indicators for cities and districts. I was not able to go to that training. Um, and then on the twenty-seventh of May, we had a, uh, RCEA meeting. And I gave a report to the, uh, members about our own Tesla Power Pack, um, program, which was scheduled, the test date was scheduled for May twenty-fifth. That had to be canceled because of a equipment malfunction. Yeah, so that'll have to be rescheduled for the end of June. It's, um, a complicated issue once you have to involve EG and E and shutting down the, um, treatment plants and all of those kinds of things. So toward the end of June, we'll have another attempt at that. The board discussed Assembly Bill, uh, eleven thirty-nine, which was a bill that was brought up, um, which would eliminate, uh, um, the potential energy, solar energy, um, projects, both residential and business. It not only eliminated, uh, uh, credits for many people who could currently have solar, but it would also require people who, uh, want to install solar on their houses or businesses to hire, uh, um, to pay prevailing wages. So it would be very, very cost prohibitive. So after lengthy discussion, I made a motion to oppose AB eleven thirty-nine. That passed unanimously. And, uh, I, we were notified this, uh, late last week that this bill did fail in the assembly. I was expected to see that go through, but it did fail. But I'm, uh, I'm thinking we're gonna see some form of that bill in the future. The RCEA board approved a request from staff for implementation of the community grid program, which is under, under the behind-the-meter capacity storage, which is residential battery storage. And we made that agreement with Sewell, Swell Energy Incorporated, Adelaware Corporation. We're gonna be hearing a lot more about that, um, in the future over the next couple of years. This is, uh, the same kind of idea that we have with the Tesla Power Pack over at the, um, treatment plant, uh, except this is, uh, bringing into, um, residences in Fortuna. Uh, the board authorized a deputy director, posi- executive director position and adjusted three other positions. Um, we, uh, authorized a pay scale, added sixteen percent to each of the job classifications. Uh, after a recent salary survey showed that the salaries for RCEA employees were really very much behind, uh, the rest of the state. Um, and, uh, the idea that with Co- with COVID, a lot of, um, the jobs can be done from the, from home. And so we're just really behind in a lot of, uh, in a lot of those particular positions. Um, we discussed the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which at least right now indicates a higher cost, higher costs than we have in revenues by about a five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the staff is reworking those figures to try to carve that, uh, deficit out. A lot of this is, um, attributed to the weather incidents in Texas earlier this year. Or, uh, yeah, earlier this year. And then you probably saw the latest information from the president and governor regarding the offshore wind energy development. This is really exciting. Uh, the state is putting forth eleven million dollars for the Hum- Humboldt County Harbor District to potentially leverage up to sixty-six million dollars from federal money for the development of the harbor facility for upgrades. Uh, that grant has to, the proposal has to be done by July thirtieth. They're, they're sure that they're going to get that done. So that's some exciting, um, changes that, uh, will be coming, will be discussed in the future. So that is all I have.
Okay. Jeremy?
Well, um, you already heard a great presentation from IF Bid, so I'm gonna go right past that this time and go right to Parks and Rec. Our Parks and Rec Director asked me to, uh, make sure and mentioned to everybody, because it'll happen before the next time we get together, uh, Pastels in the Park. Uh, calling all artists and businesses in conjunction with First Five Humboldt, Fortuna Parks and Recreation is hosting Pastels in the Park at Newburgh Park Saturday, the nineteenth, from ten to twelve. So the artists will be there from ten to twelve, creating the artwork, and then it'll be on display at noon. Uh, people can come by and check out during the process, or they can wait to see the finished product. But it's at Ro- it's at Newburgh Park near the main soccer field. Uh, there's a cost per square of a ten-by-ten section, uh, for people to do their artwork. Businesses can either sponsor an artist and and invite an artist to, um, to create art on their behalf, or any business could, uh, do their own artwork, uh, and any individual, uh, for that matter. Um, the cost is fifty dollars for a ten-foot by ten-foot square. The pastel kit will be provided for each participant. And you must register by Thursday, June seventeenth, by four PM at the Parks and Rec office. Uh, swing by the Park and Rec office or call seven-two-five-seven-six-two-zero to register or to ask any questions. But real, real excited to partner with First Five Humboldt and the city of Fortuna's Park and Recs direct, uh, Parks and Recreation Department. And all proceeds will benefit Fortuna Recreation. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeremy. Tammy?
Sorry, I forgot to turn it on again. I have nothing to report.
Okay. All right, so, um, we're planning on having fireworks only on July third at the high school again. So no event, but actual fireworks. So figure out where you can watch them with your family and your friends and have a good time on July third. Um, redact was canceled for May, but I have an executive meeting on July seventeenth as well as a RAN meeting, which I'm, um, got appointed to by the mayor's select committee meeting with Sheriff Hansel to figure out where those funds get spent. Um, we had our Redwood Empire Division meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, I was surprised that our attendance as a council was down on that, but it isn't very fun doing Zoom. Got it, man. I'm ready to see people. Um, we had our committee meetings last week. I had the housing, I always forget the name of it, it's long, Housing Community and Economic Development Committee. We only got through one item on our agenda. It was a discussion about whether or not to support a constitutional amendment that says cities can have ordinances that and I was appalled that so many of the people on the committee, there's like sixty-seven people in the meeting, didn't, weren't jumping on that and saying, this is the way we can get back to local control. It was like they just didn't know what to do. And I was just, I couldn't believe it. So now they are planning on, uh, forming a subcommittee to hash it out and look and see what it looks like. So I have asked Jason Ryan to be on that subcommittee, cuz I think they're all crazy. Um, and then I had the governance one where they talked a lot about city liabilities for PERS and all that kinda stuff. And that one was actually a lot quicker. And that one was actually a lot quicker. I'm really excited for a live chamber mixer next week. So I think Renee is not on here anymore and I wanted to tell her that earlier and I forgot. So I'm looking forward to seeing a bunch of our community and business people out and about next week. So I think that will be really fun. And I think that might be it. So we do have a closed session item still to deal with. We have a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Section 54956.8 of the government code, vacant land along Mill River and 1320 Riverwalk Drive. The negotiating parties are city manager Merritt Perry for the city of Fortuna and land empty as negotiating parties. Under negotiation is the price in terms of payment. So if anyone from the public has any comments before we adjourn to closed session about that item, that would be the time to jump on. I see no hands raised. So we're not giving them very much time. We're closing public comment and we need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll wait for Sienna to get us all set.